Call the meeting of the Commission to Order and following a recess from yesterday. And the first one up today that we have to hear from is Judge Feifley, relative to the courts. Welcome, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't have a lot extra to add beyond the court's submission. As a reminder, we continue to work with you on a yearly basis to try to set a budget that makes some sense for you in terms of your obligations for payment to the court system. If you'll look at the budget numbers, it's a slight increase from last fiscal year's budget request. That's essentially based on a couple of different factors, one of which is if you go back and look, it's pretty consistent with what the 2019 numbers are. And after COVID, our expectation is that we'll move back into more active court proceedings. We do have somewhat of a significant backlog. We've already been fairly busy in jury trials. We've got about 100 and between 155 and 160 court cases that need to be tried that have been delayed because of pandemic use. Those are more expensive propositions for you because they involve more attorney time and attorney effort. So we anticipate a slight increase. The other thing that's impacting your budget is that the payment that you need to make for your court-appointed attorney fee itself has increased about 5%. And so that number increases your budget as well because the hourly rate that these attorneys ask us for has increased through the court administrative office and peer over the last year. So those two factors sort of impact those numbers. We continue to fight some violent crime issues. I presume Mr. Barnbargo will tell you, we've got the same issue. I think there are more active homicides going on right now in Pennington County than ever before. I think the last count, the number's right around 28 active homicides that are going through the system, and those are incredibly expensive and difficult cases for all pieces of who you have to supply money to over the course of the year. So that's sort of where we're at. I don't think the increase is outrageous. I think it's realistic in terms of what we might expect based on those factors moving forward. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions for the judge?
All I can say is I think we can all agree that meth is a problem, and it's not getting any better. The statistics we saw yesterday, there's a steady increase, and with that increase, there's going to be an increased cost of county, as much as we don't want to see it.
Yeah, you are absolutely on point. The one thing that I think has sort of been an interesting change for us in the court system is that I think our actual prosecutable meth cases are down. I think that also is based on a couple of different factors, one of which is drug diversion that the state's attorney's office is doing. They're trying to take, I'll call them, first-level offenders out and kind of get that question answered and fixed for those folks before they get into the system because I think we all agree that, two things, that one, that's better for the individual, and I think better for the county because we can put people on a path that makes some sense for them. And the second thing, I think it's less expensive if we don't have those court proceedings going on to have those folks go through the treatment protocol. But what has changed dramatically is those sorts of drug use cases have drastically caused us to have more of these violent crime cases. And that's a real concern for us moving forward, not only in terms of what it impacts our community, but they're just more expensive to handle. And that's what we're seeing.
Good. Commissioner LaCroix.
What's your thoughts on the abuse and neglect? I mean, is the meth having a lot of effect on the abuse and bringing those cases up? Or what kind of things are we trying to do? You know, we had our public defenders, and you're talking about abuse and neglect, and is that rising in our community too?
Yeah, that's what we're seeing, Commissioner LaCroix, is that that drug impact stuff is the kind of thing that drives all pieces of our docket, including the abuse and neglect cases. When we have more people involved in criminal proceedings because they have that drug addiction issue, then we see that impact on families. And it's not just the budget that you pay for. We see it pretty regularly on other family law-type cases. It's prevalent, and I just don't see the impact, as you mentioned, Commissioner, going down drastically anytime soon.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you.
Judge. I know you're active in the community and prevention and so forth, so I mean, I really appreciate your efforts.
Well, I do want to commend the Commission on its willingness to sort of take a step sort of out of the normal path in terms of supporting the things that our stakeholder group has been working on through the Safety and Justice Challenge. I mean, those are efforts, I think, that are designed to provide some long-term impact on reducing these kinds of things. It's a huge wheel to turn, and it takes us a while to get there. But I am absolutely convinced that by the time we work through this problem over the course of the next five to 10 years, that that will have a dramatic impact on all these issues that we're seeing, both in terms of what you're talking about with your state's attorney and your public defender that you fund, but also the court system. I think we'll see some real capability to sort of manage those things better as we move through this process. That's the plan.
Judge Feifley, have you, I know the Safety and Justice Challenge is always changing. You're trying to figure out, this works, this doesn't work. Have they done any other changes in the last few months from just looking at the statistics or something that could be different that isn't working or is working, meaning something that isn't working that I know Liz was always saying were ever-changing? Is it, have they worked anything else different into it?
Commissioner Hickok, I think the evolving model is the one that you're talking about, and I think that's the right one. We've been blessed to get some money from MacArthur to sort of try some things. I think the real thing now is we're trying to find those pieces that we believe make some sense for the county long-term in terms of sustainability because that's really where MacArthur's at. That money, over the course of the next couple of years, is essentially going to end for all of us. And so we're looking at what pieces make sense for us to keep, and I think that's our focus now. I think we're looking at, you know, some of the things that the state's attorney's office is doing in terms of diversion and treatment protocol. I think we're all convinced that the care campus is a sustainable option and makes a lot of sense for us as a community to keep because of the services that it provides. I think the other thing that we're looking at is in terms of sustainability is what I'll call the pre-trial service piece. That's the sort of notifications to folks about court dates, that's some, you know, community work kind of things that we're working on and keeping these people recognizing that they need to come into the court system. I mean, I often sort of kick myself because, you know, we're asking a group of people to follow rules that are there because they don't know how to follow rules. So it tends to be sort of a frustrating exercise, and so we're trying to work on some things to make sure that we find ways that get them to recognize the seriousness of why they're in court, show up, be there, because that's a real cost impact to you. If we have multiple contacts with the court system, if we have, you know, in and out of jail with the system, those are the kinds of pieces that we're hoping to have some good sustainability with as we move forward because I think that'll help us reduce costs and keep these people sort of focused a little better.
I think the bottom line is people don't know life skills. People think people know life skills. I mean, if you've lived in the system long enough, you already know those life skills have ever changed. And a lot of times when I'm listening to people that've been in those systems, the basics are huge for them, and I don't know if we do anything to do, teach people on life skills or what kind of classes. The other thing is I think the crisis stabilization unit for mental health is going to be huge because I think a lot of that is tied into whether it's alcohol, drugs, or just life skills on people. They have some mental disabilities that I think if we could, you're never going to nip it in the butt. I mean, that's just not, that's not what you're saying about mental illness, but you can hopefully change the life skills or the, I don't know, counseling and different things that are going to help people. Because when I'm watching people, there's a lot of people, more than you think, that need the crisis stabilization or the mental part of it. So it'll be exciting to see what we're going to do there, and I think we're going to have, we're going to overload pretty quick on that stabilization unit because just from listening to the prosecutors and the lawyers and judges and different people, it's huge what that's going to do.
I think you've hit the nail on the head that, you know, we often find people in our system have system skills. They understand sort of what keeps them in and out of the system and how that works, but they don't have very good life skills. And they're in the system because those life skill planning issues are a little bit difficult, and they're often on the edge as sort of like a life chaos crisis. And the idea through all these things is to find some ways to connect them with the kinds of services that are, frankly, pretty readily available in our community to get them to a place where they understand, this is the type of thing that can get me out of there. And those are all pieces of that. And I think long-term, our hope is to make sure that that creates some sustainability for those pieces, that that has a dramatic impact on those folks that we see on a regular basis, and then it allows those folks to become more productive, and it's better for them and it's better for the community.
Well, they have it for, like, they used to have a home person for Black Hills Workshop, and then they'd have pods, which they're kind of getting out of now. It seems like almost through transitional housing in order to teach people, and people might think that's for people that have life skills or live in the house and haven't been in the system, that seems like, oh, that's just silly. But just watching people and even, I'll just tell you, we check out vacuums, and we have cleaning supplies at our motel. And then you go in and, you know, people, okay, how do you clean a toilet? What do you use on the toilet? So it's kind of crazy that you're just sitting there, okay, and then pretty soon you see more and more, and then you're just like, wow, okay, there's a lot more people than you think that don't have life skills. But if you're taught, and we find that, you know, you vacuum, and those same people come in, vacuum and clean, and it seems like, like I said, it seems simple to most of us, but even in that transition through the system, those people need those life skills and that almost like a, you know, you got to get this done, this is in order to stay here, to keep it clean. So bottom line is, is I don't know how you work that in the system. I don't know if they ever have, but I think it's huge, those little things that make huge differences for most people, and homeless people. People that have been on the street, they call them "street angels," is what I hear. So a lot of times they're calling them "street angels," and they're saying they don't have those life skills. And then when they come into your places, you go, wow, okay. So it's almost like you're training people to be able to stay in a place, even for a couple of days. It's huge, so.
All those are part of the puzzle that we need to sort of put the pieces together in a way.
You guys are doing a good job, but it's just, to me, just watching all this is, in one sense, enlightening, and the other is just like, I didn't know all this, and then understand a lot of your guys' jobs a lot better, police and sheriff and everybody, what they do for a living, and then the judges, and just the system of watching the drug use and the, you know, kids come through that, like you said, Lloyd with the abuse and neglect, a lot of that has to do with that drug use and that alcohol use, that kids through the system, that's what they learn, so that's what they have to deal with that crisis a lot, so.
So Judge, I appreciate your comments relative to the effectiveness of the care campus. Obviously, treatment and education have been effective and will continue to be effective. And the payback comes in the years to come. And so I appreciate your involvement with all of that, and appreciate you being here to present your budget.
Thank you. Just one final comment before I leave, and again, I think that this is sort of the hallmark of how this works together pretty well, is that I think our county's relatively unique in South Dakota in particular, but certainly perhaps around the country in terms of the partnerships that the various stakeholders work together. And this has been a regular practice for a large number of years, that whether it's prosecutor's office, defense attorney's office, county commission, court system, you know, service providers try to work together to make sure that we can most effectively use the limited funds that we have to address some of these issues. So I do want to say I want to appreciate the ability for my group to work with those folks that you folks regularly support, and I commend them, and I thank you for allowing them to do that with us because I think that makes the system move a little bit better. And our hope is we get to the point that you're talking about, Commissioner Drew, is that in five years from now, we can all have a toast at one of these meetings about how successful this has been. So thank you, and I remain available for any questions if you have them by email or phone.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Good morning. Kevin Carley, Director, Pennington County 911. I'm going to cover a few stats to let you know what we did in 2020 over in the 911 center, just to let you know what the workload is over there and the growth that we've seen. In 2020, we answered about 75,000 911 calls. We answered about 160,000 phone calls on our non-emergency lines because we are the primary answers for the police department and the sheriff's office on their business lines. And we made about 66,000 outbound calls, so total, we processed about 297,000 phone calls in the center. And with all the agencies that we dispatched for, we processed about 350,000 calls for service. Text to 911 got up and running this year, and we've had a few questions about that. So we average about 100 text to 911 messages per month. The average session lasts about nine minutes, and there's about 13 messages exchanged between the dispatcher and the person. And the reason why those sessions last longer is typically people don't respond to the dispatcher's messages right away. We have to wait for them to respond quite frequently, so that's why those text sessions last longer than an average phone session would last. For our 2022 proposed budget, overall, we're showing a 1% reduction in the budget. That's primarily due to us paying off a lease with Motorola early. We did a lease purchase with Motorola for our radio equipment for our backup center in 2018. And the state made some funds available unexpectedly through the state 911 funds, and we applied for, they weren't, the state wasn't calling it a grant, that's not sure what it was. We were eligible for $550,000 through that fund. We applied for that. We were granted that, so we paid that lease on fairly, so that lease payment that we had in our budget every year, we're able to reduce that now. We've seen an increase in revenue. Our 911 surcharge revenue has increased by about $20,000, just due to the fact that there's more phones out there, apparently, just growth. Also, we provide contract services for the state of South Dakota, Box Elder Police Department, Badlands Park Service, Jackson County, School of Mines Police, Piedmont Volunteer Fireman Ambulance and Buildings and Grounds. We also do some alarm monitoring, and we automatically have a 3% increase built into their contracts every year. And all those agencies have the ability to appeal that to our user board if they want to reduce it or have it waived for a year. We've never had that happen. So through that automatic 3% increase, we've seen an increase in our revenue as well. Our proposed personnel budget is a 2.67% increase because of required wages roll-ups and step increases, but we're also asking for an additional FTE. And we had a conversation earlier this year about shift of rental pay, and you asked me to build that into my budget, so I did, and I'll talk about both of those things here next. Currently, for FTEs, we're at 52.5. Our last increase in FTEs was during the 2019 budget year, when DPS funded three more FTEs for us. And then I found funding internally by canceling some contract services, taking those over ourselves as a department to fund two of those, so the city and county only ended up actually funding one of those six FTEs. But due to growth, we're back there again. We had to, because of the growth on the sheriff's office pod, as you guys know, you've been in there, we have different pods for different agencies. Due to growth in the sheriff's office pod, we had to move the transport and civil deputies that work Monday through Friday, eight to five, onto their own radio channel because there was getting to be too much radio traffic with patrol and transport and civil for one dispatcher to handle. So the way we normally work there, there's a primary voice dispatcher and then a secondary dispatcher that was a support person that would catch the overflow of radio traffic and then answer 911 calls and also help run warrants checks and driver's license checks and that kind of thing. There was what we thought a very minimal amount of radio traffic from the transport officers, so we thought we could just shift that over to that support person, and they wouldn't have any problem handling that radio traffic. But what we found is once the transport and civil officers got their own radio channel, they started to talk a lot more on that channel. And it's not unnecessary traffic. I mean, there's a small percentage of it that might be unnecessary, but for the most part, it's all necessary safety-related traffic of when they're moving a prisoner, transporting a prisoner, when they're out at a residence serving civil papers. That's all information that we need to know for their safety. So there's really no way we could decrease that traffic. It was a step in the right direction. The problem is that support person, between having to handle that radio traffic and do their support duties and answer and process 911 calls, that person is becoming overwhelmed, has become one of our busiest stations in the whole center. Also, we haven't had an increase in our fire safety, our fire EMS council. We've had two people there since 1999, but we've seen a 42% increase in fire and EMS calls since that time. And our peak time for EMD calls, EMD calls are those emergency medical calls where it requires an ambulance to be dispatched in most cases. The dispatchers have to keep those people on the line longer. They have to ask more questions so that we can get that information available for the fire department and the ambulance as they respond. Those calls take longer. Our peak times are between about 11:00 in the morning and 5:00 in the afternoon, which is where we see our peak for those calls. So between the peak and those calls and the extra traffic we've seen down on that transport channel, those people are getting overwhelmed during the day, and we're missing radio traffic. We've had complaints from the transport deputies that we're missing radio traffic. We've had complaints from some of the fire EMS units that we're missing radio traffic, and it's, that's not something I can quantify. You know, we don't know how much radio traffic we're actually missing. We just have to listen to the feedback from the dispatchers and from those agencies. And so I think just due to that growth, and both Chief Colerson and Chief Hedrick have told me to be prepared for more growth because they're thinking about adding another fire station and another police station and upping their staff. Also, in that pod is where we dispatch for our contract agencies, so Box Elder P.D., National Park Service, Jackson County, all of those units get handled in that pod as well. And we've seen, over the last five years, about a 17% increase in growth in calls for service from those agencies as well. So when those dispatchers in that pod get overwhelmed, it's on those agencies that suffer for that as well. So I think we're just there. I think we're just at that point where we need to add that person. Now, we can add that FTE and still show a decrease in our overall budget because of that leeway we have due to that, that lease payment that we're not making. And my plan for that FTE would be a person that works Monday through Friday, eight to five, the same hours that the transport deputies and civil deputies work, and they just basically answer and process phone calls, and that takes that phone load off of those other dispatchers that are trying to dedicate themselves to radio traffic. I think that would really help solve that problem. The county share of that FTE would be about $17,800. The city's share would be about $35,000, because remember that, the way our budget works, after we deduct our revenues, the city and the county split it two-thirds and a third. As far as shift of rental pay goes, you know, that's something that we talked about, and I'm an advocate for that. I think we're at the point here that we need to start having a conversation about it. And you'd asked me to put that money in my budget for 2022, so I did. It's about $35,000. It's an estimate, might be a little conservative, but it's hard to estimate because it depends on your staffing levels and how many overtime shifts you have between those, during those night hours. But that's our estimation of where we think that would be. So if we decide to have a conversation about that in 2022, that money is, it's in the budget. And again, we can, with that money factored in, we can still show an overall reduction in our budget. The remaining portion is our $500,000 dedicated to operations. That's where we saw the biggest decrease due to that lease payment being reduced. Currently, in our 911 fund, we don't anticipate having to do another lease purchase again like we did there because our 911 fund right now, there's about $3 million in that due to COVID reimbursements, and our user board has asked our agencies to just keep that money there for right now. So what we think is if we have to do another major purchase of radio equipment or a major repair due to a malfunction, we'll have the money in that reserve fund to pay for that. We won't have to do a lease purchase for it. So we don't anticipate that payment, that lease payment having to come back. So that's, that's pretty much it. If you have any questions.
Appreciate it, Kevin. Questions, Kevin?
Not really a question. It's funny, you talked about the transports and the guys being, lot going on there. Listening to the conversation back and forth, because when I went and visited and did another tour yesterday, because I locked myself out of the office yesterday in the morning, so it was cool because Heather gave me a tour, and then I met some of your new people, and saw Danny again, who's been in there, what, 25 years?
Five years, yeah.
Just talking about some of the traffic or the, like you said, the transport and listening to those guys back and forth, and I also asked one of them, when I was on the road, if they could tell me where the highway patrol were when I was traveling. But for some reason, they wouldn't tell me. Anyway, just, it was interesting, the things you just talked about, your team is talking about. So I think they got you back, and the other thing is just listening. Then I understood more about what you were talking about. So I truly believe you need that, those extra FTEs, and again, your team works very hard. Can you tell me about the overtime shifts? You're still having overtime and with all the people you have? I mean, how do you?
Yeah, so all of our vacation time is covered by overtime. So every time an employee is on vacation, we have to hire another employee back to cover that position on overtime shift because we don't have the staffing to just absorb that. You know, we always have to have a certain number of people in the center to answer the radios and to answer the phones. So any time a person is on vacation, that generates overtime. And then any time there's an unscheduled absence, like someone calls in sick or has a short notice absence, that has to get covered by overtime because of staffing. So we're never going to be in a position where we can get away from that overtime. But I budget about 6% of my personal services money to overtime, and I have never quite reached that in the last few years anyways. Overtime is down. With the six FTEs that we got in 2018, that really helped a lot to bump that overtime down. And we dedicate about 6% of our personal budget to it, but we rarely use that entire 6%. And it just, it fluctuates based on where our staffing is at.
Okay, and how many people do you have on usually on average at a time, six or seven?
Eight to 10.
Okay. I guess yesterday, I might have missed a few in between.
Yeah, well, you were in there a little earlier in the morning, so, you know, as the day goes on, things get busier, so we staff up. Our peak time is at that afternoon hours from about 2:00 to 10:00, so that's where we try to have our peak staff on, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Other questions, Kevin?
Kevin, I was just going to say, I've been over there and toured your facility, and if any of you haven't been over there, I'd encourage you to do that. It's kind of a neat setup, but it also underlines the need and the busyness that goes on over there. So making sure, you know, my background is in EMS, and when you have radio communication issues, when someone's life is on the line or a structure is on the line, being able to have that communication go smoothly without any hiccups is very important, and it's something that we as a county should be providing very well. So I'm in support of the increase for the FTEs to kind of make that workload, especially as an individual who has worked dispatch. I know how the confusion can happen, so I'm in support of that as well. So thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner LaCroix.
I would agree with everything everybody's saying, and I just wanted to give you guys a shout-out for giving the tour to the youth city council and hosting them. And over in that emergency management area, they were really impressed, and I think you guys instilled some real interest in that area, in the conversations afterwards. So that was, I think, really impressive with them.
Good, thank you. Public education is something that we've worked really hard on the last four or five years. We produced our, we developed our citizens 911 class, and we're much more willing to let members of the public into the center to see what we do because people don't realize exactly how complex it is in there until they come in and see it firsthand. And so, yeah, we always enjoy those opportunities to get people into the center to see what we do.
And if you're not computer literate, you might as well not go get the job there because you're like, I went in there and said, okay, I can't even run my phone, and you guys have like five different things and they're doing this? That's what I was just telling Kevin, I said, I couldn't get a job there, they'd fired me the first day. It's, I don't know how many keyboards you have, but you have three or four screens and you're completely just changing everything every few minutes, let alone you're typing the whole time. And I said, okay, I don't want this job.
Yeah, I think there's six screens and three keyboards and two monitors, so, yeah.
I don't think people know that. I don't think people know that. There's, there's six screens, three keyboards and what?
Two, two mice, I think. Yeah.
Per station.
Yeah.
Per station.
Yeah.
That's just crazy.
Mr. Chair.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to say that, um, it's my opinion that you probably, we probably have one of the best nine-one-one operations in the county, in the state. Our county has got to be the best in the state.
I, I would second that with the technology that we have, obviously. The technology that we have and the staff that we have, I, I would agree with that with heartily.
You just never have any problems with that department. It's over there, and the only way you're ever going to know is if somebody invites you to go in there. It's just, it operates so smoothly. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Totally support your budget.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Tom Ted.
Dustin Willett, you're up.
Good morning, Chairman Drews, members of the commission, Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. So there is one small change from the documents that you have in front of you due to an email I got yesterday from the United States Geological Service. So in our one-on-one, two-eight-five budget, which is our contributions to city hazmat and water rescue, or the combination city-county hazmat and water rescue, that amount stays the same. But in that budget is also our, our cost share with the USGS for the Met Warren system, which is our series of satellite monitored stream gauges for advanced notification of flooding across Pennington County. That amount has held steady for the last few years. If, if some of you remember, you were involved in that process. We kind of went to some negotiations with them because, kind of like Kevin mentioned, with their, their automatic three percent contract increases, we were seeing that in Met Warren, and it just wasn't sustainable. So we were able to get the USGS to say that they would evaluate our cost share and break us out from all of their other partners and basically just charge us really what it costs to maintain our flood gauges, our, our Met Warren system. That cost is, has remained static the last couple of years, but I just got an email from them yesterday about the twenty-two fiscal year for the, the Met Warren gauges. And that cost to the county contract goes up four hundred dollars. So there's a four hundred dollar increase compared to what you see in front of you. However, we also offset that by, by billing our partner, so Rapid City Keystone, Rapid Valley Water. And so that revenue then goes up by about three hundred dollars. So net, I'll get all the changes to Cindy, but net, we're talking about a hundred dollar increase to that budget. But the numbers matter, so we'll, we'll have the numbers in there. That being said, the big main budget. So there were some cost increases from the guidance. And first, let me say thank you to everyone, the commission, the auditor's office, Holly, for the, the process that was laid out this year. That, that made it much less painful. It was a good process, and I, I thank you for that. In terms of some of the guidance, just some of the line items have increased beyond just salaries. It, it's important to note that, that my salary in the county budget is captured under contracts, not salaries. My paycheck actually comes from the city of Rapid City through some back and forth with, with different amounts. So my normal increases in, in my salary aren't captured in the, in the county salary line items. Those are captured in the contract, contract and fees line item. So that's why you see an increase there. Another small increase in that in terms of maintaining the level of service that we were providing last year into twenty twenty-two or this year and into twenty twenty-two is our public notification system that we use, Everbridge, where we communicate with the, the citizens and, and guests in our county for different things. We were using a, a two-on-one provided text service, and we, we exceeded their capacity. So in, in our emergency management users board, we floated the idea of adding that text messaging capability to our, our normal alerting software. And it was agreed to make that happen in the middle of last year during COVID, that Pennington County Highway, Pennington County Sheriff's Office, Emergency Management, Rapid City Fire, Rapid City Police Department would share the costs of that initial startup. And then I would build it into my budget in subsequent years, twenty twenty-two being the first. And that's about a six thousand dollar a year increase. So that, that, that six thousand dollar a year increase and my salary increases are why you see the increase to that contract and fees license in the base budget, just by way of explanation.
Dustin, just a question. How's, is Pepper paid in contract with you? Or how is, I know you guys share, cost share with fire administrator, but I'm just looking at job description, and I think hers needs to be updated for you and fire administrator.
That's absolutely part of my secondary budget request, too. Yes, we need to look at our, our current job descriptions. So currently, the way that worked out is I pay, Pepper is basically administrated under my budget, but we cost share right now sixty percent EM, forty percent fire. That percentage, Jerome and I need to, to work through with the fire service board and, and make sure, and Pepper, and make sure that that percentage is still accurate. And then there are some significant duty changes since we went to the, the Gallagher system. And so the nine thousand that I have additional in my, in my supplemental budget is contingent upon, I, I wouldn't do any of these nor, nor, can I, I don't think, do any of these changes unilaterally, but it's working in, in conjunction with John and his team and HR and the compensation committee to go through that Gallagher process, go through the job descriptions, and just make sure that, that both Alexa and, and Pepper are where they need to be. So that's contingent, obviously, upon working through that, that HR process, not just me arbitrarily upping salaries.
And just from being in that department, in that area with Pepper and seeing her job description, there isn't anything she isn't doing. So same with.
I think the, yeah, the, I, I think that the, the narrative that you've heard from just about everybody is growth continues. Work continues to increase. Things aren't static. There's always new things happening. One of our challenges in emergency management is making sure that we can justify to the taxpayers through you, the commission, that we're focused on the things we need to be focused on, that we're not chasing every, every rabbit that runs across our, our field of vision, and that we are good stewards of that money and focus on the things we need to focus on. But even with that being the case, there's always going to be more work to do and more projects to do than there is time and money to do it.
Thank you, Dustin.
And then the other big piece, so the, the big ask in, in our twenty twenty-two budget is we've been in that space, wonderful space, beautiful space, certainly beats a hand-dug bomb shelter in the basement of the courthouse. But we've been in that space now for eight years, I think is, is how long we've been in this building. Most of us don't have computers or cell phones, or sometimes even TVs that are, that are eight years old. The EOC room gets a tremendous amount of use. I don't know if you had the chance to see some of the numbers in my budget justification. But since we've moved into that space, we've had, and more now since I put these numbers together, but at the time I put this packet together, one thousand six hundred and sixteen individual events in that space, some of them multi-day events, some of them multiple week events. But again, over sixteen hundred events in that room, over seventy-two local, state, and federal agencies using that room. And sixteen of our Pennington County departments regularly use that room. So the tempo there, the, the number that's really interesting is when you, because again, a lot of those events were, were multiple days, sometimes weeks. And with the case of our COVID activation, a hundred days, if we average out the, the days that that facility is used since we stood it up eight years ago, it works out to nine out of the ten weekdays that that's room has been up, it's been occupied and used. So that's tremendous. That's awesome. We are, are super happy that that room gets that kind of operational tempo. And the technology in there supports that. And everybody is, is always very, very grateful for the technology in that room. However, we're eight years on, and that technology is, there are some, some critical pieces of that technology that are beyond end-of-life. We can't get replacements. We can't get parts to fix it. They're, they're simply end-of-life technology. And one of the pieces that, that continually gets asked for by, by departments and organizations and agencies that use that room is the ability to have a, a video teleconference, to do Zoom, Teams, go-to-meetings, web, you know, whatever, whatever the platform is. They want the ability to do that in that large room. And we did not, we asked for that capability when we built that room. And at the time, the need wasn't as, as great as it is in this, in today's day and age. However, I think that, that I wouldn't have to stand up here and talk very long to convince you of the need for, for that functionality in, in the model of today's business, whether it's emergency management or whether it's just classroom or training or meetings.
Is that the hundred and seventy, Dustin?
Yeah. So all of that basically rolls into, I, I went before my users board first, and the users board agreed that it was a needed project and authorized me to, to, to get in talks with vendors and see what it would take to upgrade that, the AV components in that room to, one, bring up to date those items that are obsolete and end-of-life, and then be able to add some of that capability, most notably the, the cameras and the integration to be able to do video teleconferences in that large room. So that's, that's a hundred and seventy thousand dollar contract with ABI. The way our budget is set up, that would be split between the city and the county. So really, that's about an eighty-five thousand dollar ask from, from the commission for my twenty twenty-two budget. With that, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Is there any, your server room, I remember that server room, is that, any upgrades to those?
Currently, no. Well, so that rack in there that has all that equipment that controls our room, there's, there's a lot of upgrades going into that particular rack, yes. But our siren servers and the other electronics that are in there, we're, we're doing okay there. That's a recent enough system for most of the park that, that those components are still, still ticking for us.
Other questions, Dustin?
Dustin, did you get COVID reimbursements for, did that go into your department or did it go into general fund?
So we worked with, kudos to, to Sabrina and Casey and, and Cindy and her crew, and then on the city side, Pauline and, and Chief Culberson. We've, we have one more big piece, and that is a reimbursement to the state for some money that was doubly collected over some grants that, that we'll have figured out here in the next day or so. My department, by the time everything's all said and done and leveled out and changed, and Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the last spreadsheet we had, if we get some reimbursement for my salaries that were collected from the city, I'll come out of that with probably about fifty thousand dollars in our budget that was unanticipated revenue that will go into our, our restricted fund balance. Does that, does that number sound accurate to you?
Without looking at.
So we didn't get a windfall. You know, we spent a whole lot of money in twenty twenty with our COVID response. And, and basically, the money that we spent wasn't, wasn't money that was in our, you know, so everything we spent came back, but the net is basically is that my, my office didn't get a windfall from, from COVID. That's not.
You can't use, you can't use the fifty for, towards the eighty-five thousand that you need for equipment?
So that money, if we get it, and we don't know that for sure that we'll get that, that's a conversation between us and the city. But my intent with our users board and, and working with Cindy and, and going through that numbers, the intent was to get that money into our restricted fund balance. There have been times within the last couple of years where we've, we've, we've never not been able to pay the bills we need to pay with our cash. But the intent is to make sure that, that we keep the, the right amount of cash in our, in our restricted fund to cover our operating expenses. But I'll, I'll let Cindy address that.
I was just going to speak to the CARES Act dollars that did go back into his fund. Because it was spent out of his fund, we did put the money back into the fund. But ultimately, the recipients of that should be the county and the city in the general fund, basically. So this year in twenty twenty-one, we are reducing the operating transfer that would have gone from general fund to emergency management to reimburse the general fund for those reimbursed dollars that went into emergency management fund. Did that sound really confusing? Because it was. But, and it, it was quite a process to try and figure out exactly how much needed to go back to the city. Then, as he said, there was one claim that got doubled up by us and the city because we didn't know Pauline was doing Dustin's wages, and we did the contract wages. So by the time we worked all the numbers back and forth, I don't have the worksheet with me to tell you how much we're reducing the operating transfer from general to emergency management, but there will be a reduction this year.
Other questions? Enough? Dustin, thank you.
Thank you so much.
What's up, next one?
Fire. Fire.
Jerome, you're up. He's got a crew.
Let's go to the power, let's go to the power.
I think, I think the little kids that were sitting in here, they were kind of asleep till y'all walked in. That says that you guys are very entertaining. Just kidding. Do you want me to say that? Caleb? They're cute. They've been very good.
We're good.
Holly, did you say we have their updated version in here, the fire board? Okay. Thank you.
Do we need to go over that then? Or it's in, okay.
One of their pages is Xed out because it was back to back. So they have the updated in a different spot. So it's all in there.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Holly, can I ask you a question? The hundred thousand, we already approved, right, in our general fund when we had the, was that the, was the last meeting board? It was under?
Correct. It's in their reserve accumulation line in the general fund.
So it's already in there?
It is. It is included, yes.
That work, Cindy said they included the volunteer portion, but they forgot the firefighter portion.
Oh.
That's the difference.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jerome Harvey, I'm the fire administrator for Pennington County, South Dakota. Today I have with me some of our fire chiefs, and also have members of the fire service board, our chairman, Caleb Dustman, our vice chairman, Charles Maude, and I have Chief Humphries from Quinn, I have Jim Johnson, Assistant Chief from Quinn, Phil Schleef, the chief of Silver City, and Kyle Shell from Wasta. So we have some of our, again, members of both the fire service boards, and our fire chiefs are here, and our chairman. Pennington County Fire Service consists of over, consists of twenty fire departments. Eighteen of those are in fact one percent volunteer, and we have four hundred and eighty-three, currently we're robbing right at four hundred and eighty-three volunteer firefighters. And Pennington County, they cover over, right over two thousand eight hundred and eighty-four square miles. So what does the fire service do here in Pennington County? We take care of wildland fires, we respond to structure fires, and we also provide initial response to medical emergencies, rescue and extrications. Essentially, you have an all-risk service. In the night, in twenty twenty, we had five thousand five hundred sixty-nine incidents that responded to, over fourteen hundred incident increase from the previous year, specifically tied to the pandemic, weather conditions, and the influx of people inviting everybody from the world to come live with you. One state definitely affects the response and the calls that you have. And we're continuing to see that go up. One way. So total county incidents to date till last, on June eighteenth, right at two thousand, right at twenty-three hundred calls, and that call volume continues to go up. And I suspect with our weather and the call volumes that we continue to see, clearly we'll probably be in the sixty-five hundred incident call rings by the end of this year. We're on kind of that trend, definitely with the weather pattern that we're seeing. Well, it's got some cost, and Commissioner Hattcock wanted to know about some cost. Make sure you guys understand some, some of the cost of why do we maintain a reserve fund? And why do we need, we'll spend that money right away. So there's always questions about use of air tankers. And out on the prairie, on our area private ground that's east of seventy-nine, that is the county responsibility. These are the costs that you're looking at if we have to call in some type of an air asset, such as a single-engine air tank. asset, such as a single-engine air tanker. Some pretty significant cost involved with that. Yes, along the Cheyenne River, down along Indian Creek, there is an eastern part of the county that incredibly rough terrain that our volunteers are not suited to deal with. We would have to bring in a hand crew, and that's happened in the past. And you see different levels of cost that probably your upper end is twelve thousand or more dollars a day for a hand crew to come in. Dozer support. If we're in some of that rough terrain and we're not able to get our engines or hose lays into it, yes, we can bring in a state dozer. Again, that's average about two hundred dollars an hour. What is the cost to outfit in the fire department? What do our volunteers go through and expenses that they have? And we ran these numbers again to make sure that we're on point with these numbers, checked several different sources on that. And for example, in scenic, these are eighteen firefighters currently rostered in scenic. If we were to outfit those today from scratch, you're looking at about sixty-three thousand dollars. Charles, how much is that of your budget? I mean, how many how many years would it take you to bring up sixty-three thousand dollars?
About ten.
So there is cost involved in just protecting our people, and that's the number one thing that we're concerned about. It's the most valuable resource that we have is our personnel. Again, we're all risk, so our firefighters both do wildland fires and respond to structural fires. So we also have a cost associated with the personal protective equipment for that. Again, these costs are from this week from vendors providing us with the cost if we had to go out right today and buy this stuff. Wausau currently rostered right at twenty-nine thousand or twenty-nine firefighters, costs over a hundred thousand dollars if we had to outfit them right today, not including the self-contained breathing apparatus, which allows them to enter atmospheres that are immediately dangerous to life and health. Of course, we have communications. Our communications goes both both ways. We use communications on our wildland incidents, our structural incidents. We really do not have a need for anything else other than one radio that's in the vehicle, one radio that the firefighter carries. If we would not buy those today, there's the cost that you're looking at as far as the cost of the radios for our communication network. Fortunately, we've been successful, our fire departments have been successful in getting some grant assistance in the past on this, specifically tied to the unfunded mandate by the state on the swap over that's occurring in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. We do have some additional associated costs with some of the infrastructure that's coming up, and we address that in our specifically in our nine-year plan. So what's happened and what is going on as far as the fire world? Everybody's very concerned about drought conditions. Everybody's concerned about the stress that's going on with the ever-increasing fire seasons. I talked to you here a month or so ago after the Schroeder Road Fire, and I gave up as far as seasons a long time ago. To me, fire seasons are year-round. So already in this county, we've experienced a type-two incident, which was the number one fire in the Rocky Mountain region. The cost currently is over one point seven million dollars. Ten families received rare cross assistance and one home was lost. Because of the money that's been invested by this commission since the mid-seventies, we were able to mobilize over two hundred and fifty firefighters within one hour of that fire. The human cost of this, and my point on this is if this fire had gotten into the city limits, had caused more damage to houses, fifty, a hundred homes been lost, we don't have the human resources here to help take care of that. That's a that's an immense humanitarian toll. So our firefighters are able to avert that kind of crisis for you because you continue to put those kind of dollars into it.
So Jerome, how many volunteer fire department people were on that fire?
Within within the first hour, we had we did an all-call and we had two hundred and fifty of our firefighters on the fire, plus we had three other fires burning in the county. Over that four-day period, we had nineteen fires, and essentially, we caught all nineteen of those fires. All of our volunteer firefighters were involved in all those fires, and we caught those fires within the first operational period. That's a huge deal. I've been doing this since nineteen seventy-nine. I've been involved in wildland incidents over the world, and I've seen what happens when you can't mobilize and you can't coordinate yourself, and that's where you end up with large losses. Because of the communications network and the county staying on point on this, we were able to mobilize that amount of people rapidly and deal with the other fires that were going on in the county. That's a huge thing for you. That's a win for the taxpayers here in this county.
Mr. Chair. When we went up and looked at the fire a few days after the fire, and I can say nineteen ninety or nineteen eighty-eight, I was a first responder on the Westbury Trails fire. And that fire could have been a lot worse if it hadn't been for the Westbury Trails fire, because a lot of that tree canopy had been destroyed in nineteen eighty-eight. If that had not been destroyed, that fire could have been a lot worse with the winds the way they blew.
Yeah, you're dealing with eighty mile an hour plus wind, steady winds eighty-plus miles an hour. The Westbury Trails fire from the point of origin until it got to Highway forty-four, if you remember, was over four days. But then now we're dealing with a grass fuel model as the hills converts itself back to a grass fuel model, and now we're dealing with the grass fires and sixty percent slopes. It doesn't happen. You just you just got to, you know, there's you can't directly go with it like you were with the Westbury Trails fire. So grass creates, especially in those steeper terrains like that, creates some real issues.
Yeah, I just wanted to wanted to say something on on that fire. My father was in in eighty-eight, was on the overhead team for the Westbury Trails fire.
Tell him tell him your name.
Oh, we are. Oh, I'm Caleb Dustman. I'm the I'm the chief of the New Underwood Fire Department. Sorry about that. But he he always told the story of of how big of a problem getting back to that communications point was. And Mr. Ross, can I, you were on that fire. My dad would would talk about how he had to carry five radios so he could get in touch with the volunteers, had their own radio, the state, the Fed, and how it was they would they would lose people for days and couldn't find them. And, you know, similar fire, similar conditions, we were our mobilization and our communications was was flawless. It was just and that just speaks to how putting that 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 time and that that money into communications makes makes a huge difference.
I just want to add that my truck was a six-by-six military truck with a five-hundred-gallon tank and and it would start about fifty percent of the time. That day it started.
Charles knows about that.
We've gone a long ways.
Was it a canvas roof or metal?
It was metal. Well, you're lucky. I was doing one one time the canvas caught on fire, so the roof of the fire engine was on fire, so. I'm going to have Brant come on up here. If you could come on up. There's some discussion about what are we looking at as far as the future conditions here this year? And we've been in a drought period for quite some time here, and I'm going to let him speak a little more on this and fires in general. And the other one slides past us if you need that as far as the hundred and twenty day for Joel for August.
Okay. Appreciate you letting me come speak on this. So last time I was up here, we were kind of talking about the communication and prevention and getting the word out to the public about preventing this from happening in the first place. We're now in the stage where I think people understand we're in a drought. We got that check mark there, but nothing speaks to, I suppose, this a funding of a fire department when you're riding home and then there's ash falling on your house from the Schroeder Fire, you say, huh, that's disconcerting.
Oh, sir, if you'd tell us your name and what you do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Brant Beckman, I'm a meteorologist with New Center One, the morning meteorologist.
Thank you, sir.
Apologies. So that's that alone kind of puts into perspective immediately, okay, that's that's important that we had that funding put in place for communication and for the volunteer fire departments. Kind of a little bit of the background of what I've seen since I have come up here. I was very negligent on grass fires. You study them, you look at them, you look at wildfires, you study them, you look at them. My past experience was with flooding, with hurricanes, with tornadoes. In the southeast, that's generally what you studied and the destruction patterns and working with EMAs and making sure that you understand the aftermath of these events. I promise I won't speak on anything that I don't have experience in. I don't have experience on running a set here, putting a buddy together, anything like that. But I do know that every person who showed up to these events mattered. Every person who had the proper equipment made a much significant, much bigger significant difference in the outcome of that event, whether it's a tornado goes through a house and you have EMS there within fifteen minutes, or you have the crews able to remove power poles. Grass fires, wildfires, has absolutely blown my mind about the resources that it requires to make sure that you are keeping a lid on the situation, particularly when you have drought conditions. And it's so important because when you think about hail, imagine if we were to set up volunteer fire volunteer hail departments where you could keep hail at bay. It's a different concept. Fire, you can actually, after it's happened, you can do something about it. You have resources you can throw at it to mitigate the cost. You can't throw resources at a tornado. You can't throw resources at something that is currently occurring. The only thing I could think that comes to that's close was Mississippi River flooding in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, a bunch of people coming together, manual labor, filling sandbags night after night after night after night. But this is an all-year-round threat through here. Schroder Fire is example, Legion Lake Fire is an example. So having these departments ready to go and fully funded is, in my mind, the best prevention method. When I went up to the Perkins Fire, windy fire, there was a gentleman, I don't want to name him by name, whose property I was able to look at. There were several properties in that area that went through the grass fire. And when he was telling the story about how things came together, it was the volunteer fire departments that were there first, and if you're able to take a satellite image of his property, it's a V of where the fire went around his house, they had just enough manpower, just enough communication, just enough equipment to save the house. He lost the two million dollars pieces of equipment behind the house. It came back around his house and went through the rest of the field. They had just enough manpower to save his house. And the biggest thing to him was that I'm so glad that my pictures were saved. And that was hard for him to say. It was hard for me to hear it. You go to the next property and you have someone who has lost a large amount of equipment, lost lost cattle, lost sheep, and this person's in a state of shock. So you have to approach the situation and say, okay, how fast did this fire go? Where where was it going? He says, I don't remember. I don't. I I'm still trying to put myself back together here. And you meet with a lot of people after floods and after hurricanes and whatnot. This is this is different out here. This is extremely personal type of natural disaster. And when you look at things like the Schroder Fire, where people are out of their homes for a week, and you have the Pennington County Fire that's able to get information out hour by hour or day by day and letting these people know this is where we're fighting the fire, this is where we have resources, this is where this is going, and this is one of the better situations that you can hope for when you're looking at grass fires and wildfires is they can ensure that you have proper communication between the different departments. And not only with that, but with the public. I mean, from my standpoint, I want to be able to get information out to the public about what's going on. And because Jerome knows what's going on, he's not going to try and speak to anything that he doesn't know about, but because he has information, he knows where his crews are, he knows what's going on, he can get me that information, and I can get that information out to the public. I can't reiterate how important that is when you are looking at a situation like the Schroder Fire, like the Legion Lake Fire. And when you go up to Perkins County, you know, you think, oh, there was a windy fire. You know, there's something called the windy fire. You go up there and, you know, it's a little farther away than Pennington County. Didn't hear about it a lot. It was devastating. It was devastating. It still is. There there's generations of work that has been lost for this gentleman. He says it's going to take generations to get back. He lost he lost the land, he lost the equipment, he lost the cattle, and the one of the number one victims of these fires is not generally going to be, large conglomeration, it's going to be the family ranch. That's going to be the number one loss there because they cannot recuperate those losses as easy as someone with larger tracts of land. So then you are kind of looking at a small-ball effect there because they're gone then. Providing proper communication, providing proper funding for these entities that get there and to mitigate the fire while larger equipment, larger resources are brought to the scene is one of the best ways that you can prevent these situations from getting out of control. And that's just from the experience that I've had.
Thank you.
There's a lot of concern about the information that is gathered to determine the drought monitor that you see up on your screen. This drought monitor is actually about a week behind as far as posting on it. But I can tell you that any of the chiefs that are here in the back will tell you that the concern that they have this year is that most of what they're looking at is is at least D four, basically, which is released. Am I right on that, guys? So there's some concern about the conditions. And the next slide that we have up here, and Brant can speak to this a little bit. We talked about the hundred and twenty day over the winter time in the department head meetings, and Chairman Drew's asked about that. And if you remember, we were talking about the hundred and twenty day, this thing was right on in March. And this is what I personally looked to for years and watched the hundred and twenty day. And if you talk to the state meteorologist, fire meteorologist, you talk to Brant here, everybody's looking on the glide path through through July into August, and these are conditions that they're looking at as far as the hundred and twenty day forecast in August for for our area.
Yeah. By the way, Darren Clavell, one of the smartest individuals I've ever met, if he tells you that that something's going on, he's a person to listen to as far as this information is concerned. You know, you wake up today, you have rain, that's great. We need about five more of these long-range events if we want to make it to the table, to to balance, not to be over, to just balance the scale here. We're entering our drier period of time, July, August. Next week, already, we have long-range patterns that suggest we're going to be back into the nineties and one hundreds for the Fourth of July. We have a massive ridge that's to our west, and so now you're talking about any systems that come through that area are going to be going through some of the driest portions of the country. You're not going to be able to get large-scale systems that, you know, we can't just hope for large rain events in late July and August. It's just it's just not a thing. That's our isolated thunderstorm season. So if you look at this map, odds are, you know, if you're if you're throwing, you know, throwing bets on the table here, that it's it's not going to shrink, it's going to grow at this point. Whatever rain we're getting for the growing season, May and June, we got it. We're lucky that we're getting what we're getting today.
You other guys are such doom and gloom all the time.
Oh, yeah. Like preachers.
All right. Thank you, Brant. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Any questions of Brant before we?
Thank you, Brant.
Thank you, Brant.
Thank you.
Jerome, can you tell us about your budget a little bit?
So we put some slides up as far as the budget. This is our base budget for administration. My apologies again to Holly and Cindy for the mathematical wizardry at the end there, and appreciate you guys helping us get that covered. Any questions on our on our base budget here at all?
So you are thirty thousand short of your base budget?
Yeah, it's on our it's on our workers' compensation for, sorry, it's on our base budget for workers' compensation. We have the volunteers are broke out by state statute and come out of the general fund. We do provide workers' compensation sold forward to the some of the career personnel, and that's a pass-through and that what that does in the smaller departments is actually reduce overall load as far as the workers' compensation back to the taxpayer.
So we talked about some of the equipment in some of the areas. Again, I think the biggest need from being on the Fire Service Board was some of these districts that don't have a tax base, mostly federal land, that they cannot get help with, and that they did put in a secondary budget for these areas this year besides that capital improvement fund.
Would you like me to go forward to that?
Yes, if you would.
Okay, so those that were with us last year, we worked on the five-year plan, and we're out past twenty thirty, and the the committee last year put in five hundred man-hours. This year, the committee put in over three hundred man-hours to refine this plan, and we're out nine years on our on our plan. So we're looking at some fairly significant events that are coming up. And again, the desire on this is not to come into future commissions and say, surprise, we need this amount of money and we need it now. So we're trying to build that up so we can either start taking care of some of these issues tied back to the unfunded mandate from the state or be able to prepare for the tied back to the unfunded mandate from the state, or be able to prepare for these issues when they come up in our end of life.
Right. And then we have fire departments, four of them, that are putting in a wish list as well.
So, yeah, secondary budget request, remember, 33% of our fire departments do not have any type of steady state funding outside of what the county gives them, provides for them, and what they can pick up on, on donations, fundraisers, et cetera. And we're way past the age of pancake feeds and chili feeds being all the fun fire departments. Okay, so our secondary budget request, we specifically pulled out the communications issues that's in the nine year plan. And if you so inclined to do so, we marked these out so we could move forward on this and do this basically within the next year as far as the funding is concerned, if that's yours, so choosing to help us address some of these large scale communications issues that we do have and are facing. Your communications network does cover all the firefighting agencies in Pennington County, all your ambulance services, your search and rescue team, water, dive teams, so on and so forth. So that's both paging and voice communications involved with that. We have some very dark areas, area that's north of Quinn, north of Creighton, towards Pedro, that is one of the largest areas. Quite frankly, that concerns me with the amount of private ground that is up there, the drought conditions, the grass conditions they see as far as having a large scale impact incident that will affect the county on a large scale. Of course, down in the Kanata Basin, east of Scenic. And of course, we have some pretty huge issues as far as west of Hill City, southwest of Rochford, some of those areas that we have concerns with that we need to do some things in the future on. Get on that.
Okay, so the rest of the secondary request concerns a request for help with the fire stations. These are the 33% of the four fire departments that have any steady state funding. We gave you a pretty extensive narrative on this. I have the chiefs here that can come up and talk about this to you as far as their concern. If the commission is so inclined to help with the infrastructure on this, this is huge. Again, I know these guys keep hearing about this, everybody from the world is moving to South Dakota, you got the B-21 Raider plan, you got all this stuff going on. And the people are coming in expecting these services to be the same as where they're, where they're from. We rely heavily on volunteer firefighters in this county. If you can pick up any news source right now, they're talking about, well, then firefighters, federal wages, the issues that are going on there, the lack of people that, hiring issues, et cetera, that all puts that workload back on to us, on to our volunteer firefighters. Scenic Station is built in early 70s. The, they believe there's a void underneath the floor. If you pour a cup of water on the floor, it actually goes to the crack and disappears. I don't want to know what's underneath of there, maybe that's where the, you get any questions about that? Is that where you, come on up, Charles. That isn't where you bury the people that don't.
Jerome, there's kids.
Charles Maugh, Scenic's chief. I think that probably surprised Jerome the most of anything last year when we got ready for our, to host our fire service board. That building hadn't been clean in probably 20 years. We get out the tender and we washing the floor and water starts disappearing through the crack in the floor. We pumped 2,500 gallons of water and never had a drop on the floor. So that's just tends to be our problem in Scenic. We have bad soil that's built on, floors heaving. We have a tender that weighs 018,000 or better. It's tough on floors. We just wonder one day when we're going to come in there and find the tender in the hole. But that's just one of the many problems we have at Scenic. We're on a gravity flow water system with the, the area, I guess township runs that. Takes three hours fill their tender. We can put four trucks in our, in our tender in the hall. When it's cold, the other three get winterized or put in other people's shops. So that's, I'll leave some time for these other guys to speak about their departments, but that's just touching on the top of the iceberg of the issues there. Thank you.
Charles, before you leave, talk about the tax base and stuff and, and where you're getting your funding. Are you getting used equipment or, I mean, how are you guys making it?
Most of our equipment are hand-me-down equipment, maybe spent just a few thousand dollars on some of it. Lot of, our newest truck is a 1994. It was given to us from Rapid City over a year ago. Nice truck we've had in a long, long time. The, as far as funding, we charge each one of our volunteers $50 to be part of the volunteer fire department every year to come volunteer to put out fires. It's just part of the way it was organized. A lot of them are landowners, so they get their own land protected because of that $50. The funding from the townships, we have three townships we're part of, two of them cooperate really well, one of them is a little tougher to deal with. Been increased funding from them in the last couple of years, but then again, with the fire danger the way it is, they realize they need the support when, when they need it. And outside of this board and the county and the, on the fire service board paying our insurance for our trucks, there really isn't a lot of help. So that helps us get, get through that point every year and keep our trucks going. A lot of it's volunteer man hours. I've got one of the best departments, probably as far as donating fuel. When these guys take these trucks home in the summer, there's never a bill that comes back in the fall from operating that truck. And no matter what size the fire was, where it went, whether it was in our area or mutually to another area, there's never a fuel bill that comes back. And a lot of times, that's the way it is with maintenance too. And this year, we went through and changed all the oils and, and filters and everything in every truck. That would be our biggest amount of money we've spent at any one time in the last four years is what we've maintenance those trucks with.
I heard the best, best people to get to do vehicles is farmers, farmers and ranchers can make anything work. So you guys have, have shown.
Most of the time, we take a good mechanic with us. And I, Ron, he commented out on the Westbury Trails fire, and that's exactly the way I feel every time we go out. So thank you.
Got a couple of questions. How big's your current facility?
It is 55 by 60, and we share it half with the township.
Okay, and then post-frame?
It is steel frame.
Steel frames live on floor. And so the cost to cure, obviously that facility is not working. So are we looking at a new building?
Well, this, yes, we were hoping to move closer to our water source to get rid of the gravity flow problem, get, get into some newer, or some better soils for building buildings. We've got a couple of different places we could probably go, either through donated land or, or purchase for a low amount. And we are even trying to get our township to possibly donate three acres of land and, and.
So would the new building be, what, what size would you propose?
The figures Jerome used to kind of put together this deal was from our building that we put together, 60 by 80, 16 foot sidewalls and.
About 4,800 square feet.
4,800 square feet, steel frame?
Yep.
Steel society and insulated?
Super insulated. The three, Scenic, Wauston, Quinn would be, I hate to use the term cookie, you know, looking at as much cookie cutter as it could be. And then Silver City has some, some issues they have to deal with being in the mountainous terrain that they're in.
So would that be on city water and sewer then, or municipal water and sewer?
Well, yeah, I guess township sewer, water, and probably our own sewer system.
Yeah, I just trying to figure out, some of these sites won't have municipal water and sewer, so you, then you got the cost of the well and cost of the septic system. So I'm just trying to.
We're hoping to design it and get along with our township enough to acquire water from our township system.
Okay. Chief Maugh and the other chiefs here have been very much working locally as far as a teamwork approach to make all this happen. The problem that they have is they can't, if you go to the USDA and ask for a rural community development block grant or a loan or whatever, they won't give that to you because you have no steady state local funding to pay that back.
Closest steady state funding we have is comes from this board through the fire service board. So just keep that in mind.
And one more for you there, Charles. Just, just to let everyone know, what, what size is the area that you guys cover out there?
We should cover five townships, roughly, is our fire service area.
Is it one of the largest in Pennington County?
Yes, it is.
So Jerome, when you say super insulated, what would super insulated be compared to just normal insulated?
Dave, come on up and talk about the Quinn Fire Station and the heating problems that they have there.
Dave Humphreys, Quinn Fire Chief. And like our fire hall, built in 1977, Morton Building, they got a fiber foam insulation, all they got on it. And we've had issues with, well, this last winter when we got 40 below down there, our storms quit, we froze stuff up. Luckily, we didn't break anything up and we got everything going. And we had to go to a structural fire that day and stuff. But that's the same thing we're looking at. Most of our money's coming out of donations from the townships, the local farmers and ranchers, and most of our crew on our department is local farmers and ranchers.
So if the, if the building's insulated, they still have to provide some type of a heat, right?
Correct.
And I'm assuming that's propane?
Yes, propane heat.
Okay. I'm, I'm just thinking a lot of the industrial buildings that I've seen, they just use a four or eight inch blanket, and that seems to work pretty well. I just wondered if there's something in addition to that, but.
We got a half inch fiber board insulation, what we got?
Yeah, that's probably not going to work.
No.
Thank you.
Anything else for Chief Humphries? Kyle?
Thank you.
Fire station Wauston, we didn't include the photo, and it's tough to look at the photo that we have, the foundation, but the foundation is actually rotted off and the building's just sitting there. And he can, Chief Shell can speak more about that.
Yes, Kyle Shell with the Wauston Fire Department and the chief there, been the chief for the last six or eight years. But the biggest issue with our department is the structural integrity of it, of course. The, it's just a pole barn shed and, and like you said, the poles, I've got a few pictures of, a few of the poles that have rotted off at the base. And, and you know, it's just going to be an issue that we're going to have to, you know, a new fire station is going to have to be in the future for our department to keep operating. These high winds we've had now, I'm surprised it's still standing. But our funding, you know, it comes from donations as well. We don't have a steady state funding or anything like that. So these kind of issues are, to finance things like these are impossible for our, you know, for our department. I haven't been able to figure out how to do that yet. So I, I guess those are, those are just kind of the issues we're facing. Hopefully, we can get through it.
Chief Slief, Kyle? So is Carrie a relative?
Carrie?
Yeah.
Yes, that's my wife.
So you got two first responders in your family?
Yes, my, my dad and all of them, yeah. I think on roster, there's about six shells on the, of the 20 that are on the department, six of them are marshals. So yes, there's kind of a family deal as well on that little deal, so.
Appreciate you doing that. All of your family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chief Slief will talk about the Silver City Fire Department that also doubles as a private residence now, I understand.
All right.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Phil Schleif, I'm the chief in Silver City. What we're looking for is a second station on the north end of our fire district. We cover a 42 square mile area from 385 west up to Rochford Road, south to just about to Edelweiss. When Silver City started their fire department back in the 60s, the main population was in Silver City. Currently, all the growth, not all, most of the growth is along the Rochford Road, 385 corridor. And so we have had increasing calls in that area, especially medical and accident calls. And so we, we've been working for a while on trying to get a second station on that north end of our district. Currently, to take our tender, our 1983 GMC tender, from Silver City to the north end of our district takes about 25 minutes. That's just how slow it goes up those hills. So we put a brush truck in a second station in a leased building behind Cousins Pizza. The, the folks that own that were nice enough to, to allow us to do that. We built the space, we heat the space, they let us use it. But it's only big enough for a brush truck. And we really, you know, ultimately, we need a tender up there, an engine that will pump some water and supply better support to that north end of our district. The current space, they have since built a living space right next to our garage. So we get a call at midnight, go up, fire up our diesel brush truck, we wake the whole family up. You know, it's on top of a hill, and I apologize, I don't have pictures of that, I will get some to Jerome. So it's on top of the hill. In the winter, it's treacherous. We have had times where we did not take our brush truck even chained up, did not take it down that hill. And so we really need to get something on that north end of our district that can supply those things for our, for our fire district, for the protection of our, our folks.
Phil, tell me where this second station is, I'm trying to picture it.
So there's a pole barn on top of the hill behind the big chair.
Behind where?
The big chair behind Cousins Pizza. So Sugar Shack, Cousins Pizza, and then.
Oh, that used to be Frank Boyle's place.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. Some of the snow it is merit.
No, I, I totally agree. That's a problem. And I think all four of these facilities need to be built. I would, that's what I do for a living. I'd like to sit down with you, Jerome, and look at the size that they need and see how you got to the $2 million. And, but I'm totally, I think all, all four of those facilities are, we need to get those built sooner than later, and I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and go into more detail.
Will take the help. Very much so.
Yep. I can, I can probably tell you what they're going to cost pretty close. And I'd be interested, Phil, to see what there is for land. I doubt that we could get any federal land, it'd be nice.
We have been working with the Forest Service to donate us some property, and we're a couple steps into that process, looking at some land along the Rochford.
And I would be more than willing to work with you and the Forest Service on seeing how we can secure that one or two acres?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, let me know, I'll sit down with you and.
Absolutely.
And work with you on the land and the buildings.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wrap things up, just to give you an idea where the locations of the fire departments are. There was a question about consolidation of the departments that are asking for, needing the assistance. And some of these spaces are 35 to 40 miles apart from each other. So it's not really a situation where you can consolidate these. We're not going to gain anything by consolidation, actually make the response areas longer and tougher to get to. Talk about areas as far as, areas of coverage and the size of it, the area that Wall and Quinn covers is actually larger than the state of Delaware. So any questions on the secondary budget, first budget? We do have a third budget request, we need 10 FTEs down the county fire.
Looks like you got five volunteers here.
I just. Questions of Jerome?
I just got one comment.
Got it.
Jerome, I'm really impressed with your crew this year. You know, I know I was probably tough on you about three years ago, but every year you've come back and it's been better. You've gotten, you gathered the help. Mr. Drew's with the workers' compensation and Deb's worked with you hard. But I mean, the best thing I've seen is you guys come back with your budgets, with the help of Cindy, and very professional, and you guys went after it and worked at it, and you've done a very good job. I've tried to stop by your office a couple of times to, to tell you that, but you weren't there.
Thank you.
So I'll make it public, I think you're doing an awesome job.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate you and all your help stepping up.
It's not possible, all the people that are sitting behind us. I'm remiss in not recognizing Pepper Massey and the impacts she's had as far as changing how the entire county fire service operates. And not only her, but the rest of the team. You're looking at, right at 800 hours in two years that this fire service budget committee has put together. And, and again, with Pepper and all the help that she's given us, things have turned around and hopefully are headed the way that you guys want them to head.
One more thing, Jerome.
Go ahead.
You forgot to mention, I think it's. You forgot to mention, uh, I think it's July the eleventh, we have an ice cream social in Silver City. That would help.
Anybody's welcome to the ice cream social and towards the next day of the Rochford days. So we still, uh, it's a sad state of affairs in this day and age where in the, yeah, I, I wish that we had the funding to buy what we needed and the Air Force had the, had a bake sale to buy a bomber. I've never seen those days.
Well, if you go to the ice cream social in Silver City and you go down that hill, you know they gotta drive up and they have to go the other way with the boat of water.
So just one thing, Jerome.
Yes, Commissioner.
We talked about what the fire, volunteer fire departments do for fire. What other things do they help with in our communities, meaning accidents, things like that? Cause we're talking a lot about fire, but we're, we're forgetting all the other things that, um, these volunteer firemen, uh, do for their communities.
The, the fire service in Pennington County is all risk. We could talk about it being the fire service. And if you wanna change the name, I'm leaving the room because there will be a fight on your hands. It is rooted in the fire service, but you have an all-risk group of people. And there's not a medical emergency that happens in this county that ninety, eighty to ninety percent of the time, the first person through the doorway is gonna be from the fire service. Or, uh, if you wanna look back, you, you can see a, uh, help me out here as far as trends, as far as survivability of CPR incidents, medical emergencies, the whole survivability rate goes up, uh, rescues and extracations. It's whatever the problem is, if, if you ever seen Curious George, I have a ten-year-old. Used to watch a lot of Curious George and the very first pilot episode has the man in the yellow hat and George is holding on the balloons and George carries, gets carried off with the balloons. The man in the yellow hat tells the little boy with him, um, the little boy goes, what are we gonna do? He says, well, go call the fire department. And the little boy asked the man in the yellow hat, why do you call the fire department? And the man in the yellow hat says, because they'll know what to do. And that's basically where we're at.
Thought you guys just got cats out of trees.
Well, and that, that, that's, that's a very good illustration. A, uh, an old firefighter told me that the, uh, the cops did it right. They do one thing and they only do one thing. Uh, fire department was not so, uh, not, not so bright in those early days to where we catch everything. And, um, my department has everything from, uh, coming up to the hills to fight fire, fire on the prairie, getting people out of, uh, derailed trains that are underwater, um, showing up to people's houses, um, on Christmas Eve, cause, uh, grandma's in a state of distress. It's, um, we, we literally are a catchall for, for everything. It's, it's not just fire.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Jerome.
For what you do.
Thank you for your crew that you brought in.
I'm just like down at Quinn, our little department. We've been up on Bear Beat for fires for mutual aid. We've been on grain bin collapse, grain bin collapses in different counties. The mutual aid calls we've been going to is just increasing over time and where we're going as far as we go. And like us, at our department, north end of our territory is fifty-five miles of gravel road. And Pennington County gravel road is north of Wall and Quinn. Thirty-five to forty miles an hour is the top speed you can run and stay on the road.
Thank you.
Yep, thank, uh, thank you everybody for showing up today. Jerome?
Thank you.
Human Resources, John?
Right, I know.
Kind of boring now, John.
I told you, I was thinking. It's like I'm kinda feeling bad here. Um, anyway, good morning Commissioners, John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. What I wanna do is give a, a very brief overview, and I know it's hard to believe that I can be brief, but I'm gonna try. Of the things that we've been working on, um, as you know, this year, twenty twenty-one, was the implementation of a new pay system. Megan from our department, who is also here, uh, today, uh, has been working over the last six or seven months to put together the position binders, um, that we, um, have created for you as the commissioners, as well as department-specific ones for each department. That actually is the first version of all of the job descriptions, et cetera, uh, that I could find in our office since nineteen ninety-four. Was the last time that that project was completed. And it has taken her most of six or seven months to actually get that. So there's been a lot of work, uh, in communicating with the departments, getting the additional information, making sure that the job descriptions are current, um, and, and finding a way to put those in a binder that is gonna be of value to the county. They're currently working, so when I say they, it's Megan and Sandy from my department are working on a handbook renewal project. We updated the handbook in twenty eighteen. What they're doing now is a complete rework of the entire handbook. So we've got representation from across the county. The attorneys, the law enforcement side, you name it, um, they're all participating. So we've got a lot of volunteer hours put into that. I think what they'll be presenting to you as a commission later this year, um, will be a, a very fresh way of looking at it. So in some of our recent litigation, um, the employment attorney that's helping us, an external employment attorney, has reminded us that less is more. Our policies, for the most part, have been very detailed, very specific. What that creates then is a challenge for us as a, as an employer because you are expected to hold to every detail that you have in that handbook. It becomes a contract, if you will, uh, with each person that reads it or is employed by the county. By reducing some of that detail and, and broadening, um, the pieces of the handbook, I think you'll see a better value. It'll be much easier to read and, and understand, so we, we hope to have that done yet this year.
John, just real quick, relative to the handbook, how do you address the medical marijuana that's coming down the pipeline? Do you have to integrate that into the handbook somewhere?
Well, what we've done so far is it, it's part of the drug testing policy, so the drug-free workplace, we're awaiting the final decision. I saw the preliminary draft from the, the state yesterday after none of them reading through parts of that. That will be addressed as well. So what we're doing with that right now is reviewing what other entities have done, how they've addressed it. Interestingly enough, uh, there's several counties in, uh, in South Dakota as well that have already addressed it and are still staying with a zero tolerance. And I think maybe in the headlines you've seen this week, um, the state, uh, education system also is still saying they will not permit any medical use on campuses either. So, um, we're seeing that as the trend. We'll learn more in, in the next few days and then have something to bring back before the board. Now, I, I wish I had more specifics for you on that.
Would that include Muniz Palabas too? Their posture on this?
Well, it, it depends. So the way it's being addressed right now, or has until late yesterday, is each entity could determine what they wanted to do. Most of them have decided to postpone a, a formal decision or a structure. And I think we'll continue to see that for the next few weeks. I think once we have the final documents and the final, um, guidance, we'll be able to actually put something together that'll work. Now, as you're aware as well, and I, I think, um, Brittany talked about it yesterday, the planning team is, is going to Colorado to visit a county that is similar to us as far as structure, land mass, um, political nature, if you will. I think we're gonna learn a lot from that and that's mid-July that they're going there. So we'll have more information from that that will help us. And our state's attorney's office has been working, uh, extensively on researching this as well. So, uh, I think we'll all be bringing that to a head here in the next month. But I don't know that there's anything that I could share with any finality today, so. No, thank you for the questions, Commissioner. The other things that we have going, and I wanted to be sure I spoke about this. Auditor Mueller talked yesterday, as did, um, Shannon Ripperger from Equalization about this new software. And I believe Lori did too. I missed most of Lori's. I was visiting with someone in the hallway. There's a people component to that software program that I'm extremely interested in. So know that I'm gonna be in full support of that process. Parts of it are currently being used by Maude County, so, uh, the last week of July, I have time to set up to go over and visit with them. And I believe there's gonna be a visit to another county that's more similar to us in size and volume, um, coming up here this summer as well. So we'll know more about it and how it's actually being used. And as they get the, the version ten, the, the dealer that's working for us now, you're gonna see some things here that will be able to pull multiple systems together and, and ease the process for our citizens and employees. It's a pretty amazing package, so. County insurance programs, as you're aware, uh, transitioned over to HR this past fall. We're going through our first renewals with that. We just sent out earlier this week a request for, um, property contents and property values. And we're, we're gonna be getting that put together. That has consumed a lot of my time. It, it's taken me away from more of the HR focus. And I'm learning more about insurance and about property and some of our building systems than I ever thought I would. So you'll see as my secondary budget, I have a request here for a, a slight change in our department to help address that. We'll be coming to you, um, at a meeting in July, I'm assuming. As you saw with the federal government last week, um, President Biden signed into law a new federal holiday, Juneteenth. We're doing research on that as well right now. So when we look at the holiday structure for the county, uh, I'll have some additional information. I'll be sharing it at one of your July meetings that I think will help us understand that. So briefly, uh, with the federal holiday, that creates eleven federal holidays now. Our current process involves, uh, ten approved federal paid holidays, three of which we're open for right now. So we'll, we'll need to discuss that further as well. Something that's gonna be more of a focus for the county this year and into next year is really pandemic-related. And it has to do with turnover and I, the audience can't see it, maybe you can, okay. This is the HR magazine I received on Friday. In North America, fifty-two percent of currently employed people will be seeking other work yet this year into next year. Fifty-two percent of currently employed people will be seeking other employment. What does that mean for us? As a county, it's already difficult to recruit. We've seen that change over the course of the last year and a half to two years, where we may had received a hundred applications for administrative business position. We now receive between twenty-five and forty on average. So the numbers have dramatically decreased, um, for positions, even for custodians. In the past, we'd see maybe fifteen to twenty, uh, now we'll see four or five. So it's ever more important, I guess, the, the point of this, this discussion is the, the retention piece for our employees. So not only is it hard to find people, um, but with fifty-two percent actively looking for other employment, it's gonna be increasingly important for us to better understand what the employees need from us as an employer. So when I talk about the software package that, uh, the county is looking at, or will be, that self-service component is one of the major things through the HR world, um, that is seen as a benefit for the employees. They have access and visibility to their accrued time off. They have access to their work schedules. They can actually see their pay and everything else. And from an HR perspective, there's data sources there as well that we don't currently have. So I can watch the career path and training and everything else for employees during their entire time span with the county. Those would be advantages with that new software that we currently don't have. So again, employment in general, there's a number of things going on. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of some of those pieces that were out there right now, changing the landscape for employment with the county. With that said, let me just take a peek at the budget, I guess. So you'll notice on the, the standard budget for the, the new year, um, you'll see a very modest overall increase at one point eight-six percent. You'll see on the personnel side of it, it's point eight-five percent. The reason you're seeing the, the smaller increase on the personnel side, it has to do with implementing, um, the Gallagher pay scale. So, uh, assuming we'll still be allowed to do the single step for my employees for this coming year. The reason there's not a bigger wage increase or other challenges there, uh, is because we were approved for, uh, an HR journalist FTE last year, and instead of actually putting an FTE for an HR journalist, we were able to find Megan to join our team. She came in as an administrative assistant, so a, a little bit of a reduction in overall wage cost. The goal here this year, and you'll see this in the lower part of my budget request, includes some additional training and certification. My goal is to help, uh, Megan actually achieve her HR certification and allow her to participate in some of the conferences that we have statewide, um, that will give her a peer network as well as build her knowledge and experience to help the county. So that's really it for my, my base budget. You'll see, uh, again, a, a minor increase of one point eight-six percent over current year. Any questions about that, Commissioners? Okay, the secondary budget that I turned in actually is to help offset some of the extra work from the insurance programs that we have in the county. This actually, um, can be paid for by the savings, um, that we've realized or will realize as we continue to renew our policies. In December, the commission, uh, made the decision to allow the HR department to actually work directly with SDPAA, SDML, uh, on our insurance policies for property liability, uh, vehicles, uh, you name it. By doing that, we removed, um, who had been our local agent representative, um, from being that go-between. There's about a seventy thousand dollar annual savings by not paying those service fees. What I'm suggesting is that we take a portion of that and actually put a person into this administrative role as an insurance and risk management admin assistant. That person then will be charged with making sure all the claims are being received and processed and followed up on. They'll actually be, uh, responsible to be part of a safety committee that we don't have, to actually partner with the departments to understand what types of accidents are happening, what we can do to reduce those accidents from happening. And then overall inspection, if you will, of facilities. Now, we have each department responsible for those things, but I will tell you that the complexity of our operation and the time and, and commitment to that process alone is hard to come by because everyone here is so busy. You've heard about the extra space requirements, you've heard about the extra FTE requirements. You've heard about the county population growth that we've seen and that we will see in the next few years because of the changes at the base. This will be ever more important for us and I believe that we'll see additional savings for the county by having a person that focuses solely on that responsibility of risk management as well as the insurance programs that we have. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
John, I, I know that we dumped on you the insurance.
I, I've enjoyed the learning experience, sir. I have.
That's good. One of, one of the things that we deal with as a commission is the expenditures that we have. We deal with that every time we're talking about budget.
Yes, sir.
And so one of the things I really appreciate is that you're moving forward with trying to control those costs. And, uh, I, I think you're on the, on the right idea of how to control these costs, of having somebody, because of the size that we are, we really probably need somebody that's overlooking this whole program. Cause insurance costs are great for us. And so, um, I, I appreciate what you've done and, and your proposal on that. Thank you.
No, I appreciate it, sir. Thank you. I, I forgot to speak to the insurance budget, so that's in the packet as well. You'll notice there, um, from what was approved for twenty twenty-one, we're anticipating a decrease in expenses of about seventeen thousand dollars because of some of those savings that we've realized. The thing that we're gonna see for this year, twenty twenty-two and probably twenty twenty-three are gonna be elevated numbers for our, um, unemployment insurance. So again, that's based upon an experience rating. There's a three-year pattern of what they have to pay and it's based upon our ever-growing, um, payroll. So as those numbers raise, if your payroll grows, then your percentages and your dollars will raise as well. So I think you'll see that. But otherwise, um, no, that, that's all I have though. Thank you for listening.
Well, thank you, John, for, sorry, Chair. I think Gary had brought up those insurance fees. And then, um, he, uh, kinda said that with us, that you should go check on insurance. So, um, I think that was good, but he also, I believe, was involved with finding that solution with you. So.
Yes.
Um, I think that solution is good. I think it's a huge, um, savings in one sense for the seventy thousand and actually putting it into something that's a solution for our county in the future is even better because they were using those. they were using those fees for things that, you know, they decided to, and in this case, we're using it for someone that can actually help our county. So that way you guys switched that, I think, was pretty awesome. So thank you both. I know, like I said, I think Gary was involved in that just from his background and yours together, that you guys came up with a really good idea of how to find some more solution for the county in the future and insurances and other areas that we needed for risk management. So thank you both for doing that.
Most of this is John's, so credit goes there.
Definitely been a team, I've heard. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments, questions to John? Appreciate it, John.
Thank you, commissioners.
Mr. Scott Guffey, Natural Resources.
Can't ask for help on the way out.
Well, it's just good news. I'm bringing good news to you this morning. I actually missed $25,000 in revenue that I didn't get inputted, so we're getting an input. Okay. So there's a bump there. I missed the federal grants and the state grants projection there, so bringing you good news, some increase there. So I have a number of budgets that oversee. Why don't we start with 615, the biggest, the Wheaton Pass budget? We were following the guidelines. We froze operations. The only change was in the salaries according to guidelines there. And then there was a bump in group insurance. Got one of my guys in his spot, he jumped over on our insurance, and I actually did it a couple of years ago. I just hadn't counted it, I had to put it in the budget, so every year I was, I finally caught the fish, I was like, I didn't realize he bumped over on our insurance, so getting caught up on that. And then the additional ask in Wheaton Pass on 615 is a bump in our capital assets to purchase a one-ton diesel pickup off the state bid list. It'll be around $42,000. That would replace a 2008 three-quarter ton Ford pickup that has over 200,000 miles on it. Diesel's going to serve us better for pulling our Skidster and our Masquading Head when we're in the fall and wintertime, when we're doing our forestry work. So currently, we're pulling it with a one-ton gas Dodge pickup, and that, I think that diesel with the additional pulling power going up the steep hills we have in the Black Hills is going to perform better for us. The rest of the budgets. 616, which is natural, we call it the natural resources budget, it's called Grasshopper in Pess, that's what the state has the designation under on that line item, but that's our natural resources one that we run. Three of our full-time employees through that, six months of the year. So there's a little bump there. Once again, that insurance, that's where you see the majority of the increase was the additional insurance split between the two departments there. Title two, title $3, we kind of split that between search and rescue, fire, and natural resources. Search and rescue gets the majority of that. There was a reduction this year on the allocation we get from the feds. We'll probably continue to see a decrease in that. Where that funding comes from is an average of timber sale receipts on the Forest Service within the county. With the Forest Service going to reduce annual take of timber out the forest, we're going to see less receipts coming in. So we'll probably continue to see that number drop a little bit. But there's, natural resources, we're taking a little over $5,000 on that, on our work that we can claim on that. Next is predatory animal damage, 166. That's a, we get that from game fishing parks that pays for the state trapper for predator control, mainly taking out coyotes, problem coyotes that ranchers have, mainly out east. And that's based on a census count of livestock and sheep in the county, so. That stays constant for every five years, they renew that census. And then the final one I got is the conservation districts, 612. You know, our HR director, John, was up here talking about retention of employees. We give a lump sum to the conservation districts. It's been kind of in balance between West Pennington Conservation District and East. Last couple of years, we've kind of balanced them out to where they're getting the equal share. They both have good employees, good directors. We actually have Lindsay here from West Pennington. She's been on for a couple of years, and she's really improved or increased the number of projects that Conservation District is getting on the ground. So they both asked for an increase on personnel there, so what I did was bumped it up to an even 6,500 or 65,000, and then split each district with 32,500. So each district's getting a flat, even amount, make it easier for the orders office and the Conservation Districts, so know that you're getting this amount and make use of it, so. Pretty short and sweet. Like I said, the Conservation District is here. If you have any questions for them, or if you got any for me.
Well, we need to call Lindsay up. Have Lindsay maybe explain a little bit about programs that go through the Conservation Service. Morning, Lindsay.
How are you guys?
Good.
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 So our main program is we sell and plant trees, and I have talked to Travis about that process before. We currently have different agreements with different partners. So I am like the HR person for 14 employees for the game fishing parks that are out on different water areas inspecting for zebra mussels. And I also hire four employees for the Forest Service that are out marking trees that need to be thinned. And we also have a grant through the Conservation Commission that helps private land unnersten the areas in the hills. And we also, I'm partnered with the NRCS, so I hope that's the main thing, I guess, is where we put conservation on the ground, where we plant shelter belts, or we plant pipelines, and we plan water tanks, stuff like that. So there's a wide variety of things that we do.
Are you east or west?
I'm west.
West conservation.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lindsay.
You're welcome.
So Lindsay, are you back in your actual office now?
Not yet.
Okay. So because of the pandemic, most of the Conservation District directors have been taken out of the federal offices, the NRCS offices. And so where are you working out of? Are you working out of your?
My house.
Out of your house, okay.
Except for during tree season, I'm in the tree killer for quite a while. In the summer, I'm out in the field quite a bit, so I guess I'm at producers' ranches or farms a lot, but yeah. I still go in the office periodically. It's just the federal law or the current rule is, I think it's at 50 or 75% capacity. So if I go into the office, someone else has to work from home, and so it's just usually easier for me to work from home.
Did you have quite a few acres this year for trees?
We planted over 30,000 linear feet of trees.
Really? Well, good, good for you.
What kind of trees do you plant?
All sorts of them. We plant a lot of cedars and junipers because they're very drought resistant. And used to plant a lot of green ash, but you guys know that we can't do that anymore. So then I guess for deciduous trees, it's a lot of hackberries, Siberian elm.
Why can't you do the ash?
Cottonwoods. Because of the emerald ash bor.
What?
Disease.
Disease?
The emerald ash bor is a bug that actually kills them. They found it in Sioux Falls area. John Ball, the SDSU state tree expert, said in 20 years, we won't have an ash tree in South Dakota. So don't flash, plant any ash. If you have an ash tree, look at plant nets replacement, because they say in 20 years, they'll all be hit by this insect.
And John Ball has been doing research for good replacements for green ashes, so hopefully we'll be hearing some options on that soon.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Further questions, to Lindsay or Scott? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We do an east conservation?
They didn't, they're not here.
I'm going to ask them to come just because.
Oh, I thought they were here, sorry.
No, we're west and east do real similar stuff, and Lindsay did a good explanation of what they did. I'll have them in sometime during a commission meeting next spring and give you a bigger synopsis of what they all do.
Then Scott, we're going to camp next week.
Range camp next week.
What does that camp consist of?
It's going to be learning a lot of, you know, what the range conditions, different plant materials and plant life that's on the ground, and weed ID, plant ID, just a wide variety of, you know, what producers are looking for as far as good, healthy pastures and stuff like that.
This will be my first time going into the natural resources with the director, let alone learning some of the things that are in Wheaton Pass and natural resources, so.
It'll be good for you. I think you'll learn a lot.
I think it's going to be exciting, so I appreciate you taking the time and going with me.
How long are you going to keep her?
Not long enough, huh?
Got one question. Are you guys working along the Mystic Road? I see some trees marked along there.
Uh, no, we don't have anything, but there's, oh, you know what they're doing up there?
Anything?
That's the big thin project that they're doing. That's the trees that were planted from Colorado after the McVeigh fire.
Right, with the disease.
They're taking those trees out because they're not a native ponderosa pine. So they want to get rid of those and replace them with a native Black Hills pine, so it's going to be a big, big project.
That was after the McVeigh fire, they sprinkled those and.
Yeah, so they're stunted and they're disease prone. They don't get as tall as the natives, and they get a lot more branching and stuff that just not as good a wood producer tree as the ponderosa.
I thought maybe that was your project.
No, no, we don't. We're doing some weed spraying in the area in conjunction with that project.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
The next one up is Extension.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Matt Oden, the president of the Pennington County Extension Advisory Board. We appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning.
I'm Regina Bakie. I am one of the two 4H advisors here in Pennington County. With us, we also have Jane Amiot. She serves as a second advisor, and Kimberly Suko, who is our staff assistant. We also have two of our very own 4Hers here, Noah and Audrey Oden, Matt's kids, so they're joining us this morning.
They're being very, very good today.
Thank you. I'm pretty proud of them. They actually volunteered to come when I told them I was coming here today. They wanted to learn about this, so it wasn't that I lacked childcare and so I decided to bring them.
They're doing good.
Well, we want to take this opportunity to, first of all, thank you for, I, during my time, oh, I'm trying to think of what year I started as the, on the Pennington County Extension Advisory Board, I believe it was either 2013 or 2014, Lindell Peterson, former commissioner, reached out to me and asked me to get involved because he knew of my passion for 4H and youth development programs and that sort of thing, and had known me from when I was just a little kid. And so he asked me to get involved, and I said, yeah, this is something that I really would be interested in. During that time, we've seen some variety in how, you know, our involvement from the county commission, and I really appreciate the level of involvement that all of you have given us. Many of you, maybe all of you, have served and helped at some of our events, serving as judges or being there observing. I really feel like we have a very positive relationship and communication. We really have appreciated the guidance we've got. We have, one of our members on our board is a commissioner, and we have really appreciated having that guidance, especially the last several years, and has really helped us when we've had questions, and everybody's been great. So we want to, first of all, thank you guys. So the next thing I wanted to do is just kind of give you, and Regina can jump in if there's things that I state wrong, or if there's some addition that I want to give to that, but really what we do is we advise, the Pennington County Extension Advisory Board, it serves as an advisory committee for our Pennington County 4H program and for administering that. 4H, as many folks know, but in case some don't, it's a youth development program available to youth ages five to 18. They can start out learning about the program as a cloverbud at age five. At age eight, they're able to become a full member and start doing some of the, you know, a little more detailed into it and getting to learn a little bit more. The program, I started in it when I was eight years old. At that time, the cloverbuds portion, which is the five-year-olds, five to seven-year-olds, was not available. So I started when I was eight years old, and I tell you what, the 4H or things I learned about through 4H or got interested in and then got involved in other programs has been something that really impacted my life. I don't think that it's any stretch to say that I don't know that I would be here before you if it hadn't been for 4H. I really learned so much through 4H. It got me to a lot of places. I'm pretty sure I wouldn't be in my current career path if I hadn't been for 4H and some of the learning opportunities that I was able to have. And so thus, it's been something that I've wanted to help with and get my own children involved in. So in Pennington County, and as you all know, this has been a very interesting and challenging year for everyone, and some interesting and challenging rules and things like that that we've had to deal with, but I still feel like we made a positive impact in the community this past year with 4H. Our advisors and our staff assistant are incredible and are incredibly resilient people. They have figured out ways to still have most of the things that we are used to having. Now, we had to modify things, but many things, but it's, I think we've still made that positive impact for the youth of Pennington County. Recently, we surpassed 443 enrolled 4H club members, as well as, and that's one thing that was very largely impacted, but Jane's work with the schools and with outreach in youth in the county that may not be a 4H club member but are gaining something from this, she was still able to reach, you know, around 650 youth, which is down quite significantly from previous years just because of the limitations from the pandemic. But I think I commend all of our staff. They have, if it wasn't for them and their critical thinking, we wouldn't have got done what we got done. And, because I certainly don't have all the answers. I do know that, but they've come with some really great ideas. They've come with questions, and it's been a really great learning year, so. Our budget largely stayed the same from, the overall budget, bottom line, stayed the same from previous years. I believe we're up just a few hundred dollars, and most of that is related to the wages for our staff assistant that was dictated that we would, the increase that would be coming. So I think otherwise, our budget is largely the same. Do you have anything you want to touch on on that, or are there any questions on our budget?
No.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Matt, you know, I think you guys are doing a great job. I just wanted to ask, can you explain a little bit more about your budget, or, you know, how you're funded?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, that's a great question, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner LaCroy. So our budget, what you guys are funding, so we have, we have two full-time SDSU staff assistants. One of them, one of those salaries is funded 100% by SDSU. The other one, our, the funding we get from you guys kicks, is, goes with a cooperative agreement with SDSU Extension where you, we pay half the salary, and then they pay the other half of the salary and all of the benefits. That was something that I believe Um, that was something that, uh, I believe SDSU actually approached us about several years ago, um, and that was probably our last large budget increase request at that time was for that. Uh, I really feel truly that that has, has had a major positive impact and, and been able to increase our scope and, and what the, the youth were able to touch in the county. Um, and then, so then what comes out of our budget would be the programming, um, costs as well as our staff assistant, um, Kim Suko. Uh, her pay comes out of our budget as well. Um, there are some things that are kind of, I guess, a little different from probably other budgets where some of our, our budget does pay for, um, our, our staff to go to some state events for 4H, like the 4H Horse Show, uh, the, the state fair to be able to help with those events. Also, we had to, uh, do a little shifting around in our budget in order to accommodate it, but for next year, um, because there are a large number of counties that do send, um, a staff assistant to help at least for part of the state fair. That was something that we looked into doing and, and found savings in our budget elsewhere so that we could afford to do that. Um, I think that'll be a great, um, opportunity for Kim to be there to help, not only because we always need help at the state fair, um, but also as a learning and networking opportunity for her. I think that'll be a great opportunity.
I just wanted to follow up with the partnership that it, it's not all one. It, it's a partnership between SDSU and the county that is working for this and, you know, I haven't been on your, part of your board for quite a while. I'll, you know, I was originally put on because Ms. Hancock had asked me to. And I've enjoyed it. Now you have, uh, Mr. DeSanto on the board also, who's a former commissioner and, and I, during your budget process, you, you guys have always stayed within your budget. And as you talked about with, uh, uh, going to the state fair, I think that's a step up and a learning experience for the staff members who have been there and been able to participate in that. But you guys have always kept a good eye on your budget and had looked at ways to save, save money and get the best bang and buck for the buck, you know, and, and I've always appreciated, and I know Mark, and we participated, participated in being a judge in some of your, uh, activities for sending people to Washington and some other stuff. So I think, uh, we had the privilege to do that and we really enjoyed it too, so.
And I hope you'll be willing to do it again. We're always looking for, for judges and, and volunteers to help with things and, and, and yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm so glad that, um, now since Mark is not, no longer a commissioner, that he, uh, we, we reached out and asked him to join our, our group or, or submit his name and because he has been a very valuable member of our, our group. We have really valued his opinion and having him on there and helping us. Um, he just comes at it from a different direction than the rest of us do, which has been really, really good.
Yeah.
Just a couple. Any questions, comments?
Just comments. Um, I keep saying this every year and I'll keep saying it. It's a great diversion program for kids. Um, Jane going in the schools, kinda, um, schools up, uh, city kids that really don't know a lot about ag, a lot about it, what extension does. I think that's huge for them and, um, from what I've heard from some of the kids that it's pretty exciting, the things that they thought they knew are, um, it's more guesswork. You're seeing it in books and now you're seeing it in person. It's a whole different deal. Uh, they get pretty excited about ag in that sense. Um, again, um, I think the volunteers are huge in extension. We always talk about how volunteers are huge in Pennington County. Well, extension is, is, uh, no exception to that. Um, the family members that you see in, in extension is huge. I mean, the parents are always there, willing to give and help what they need to do. I think that's just, uh, part of what I've seen a lot in ag. And you've heard about it with the fire departments, the volunteer and the ranchers and farmers. They're just willing to give that extra mile in order for our community in any sense, whether it be city or, uh, the ag community to get things done. So I really appreciate that and that's opened my eyes over the years just from seeing that in your groups in extension and the family members and then fairgrounds and different areas that, uh, sometimes, uh, city folk don't see as much until we get more involved. And you guys are doing that. That's the bottom line. You're, you're getting more people to see what ag does and what agger culture does for South Dakota and that's huge.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you both.
Commissioner Ross, can I?
I just wanna thank you for the detailed, uh, budget request. Uh, all line items are explained and, and it was very easy to go through and so thanks again for putting together such a good request.
You're welcome. I, I would have to thank our staff for doing that. I.
I'll thank your staff then.
Yeah. Every year it gets, it's better and better and that's just as, you know, people are in their positions longer and learn it, but, but this was, uh, yeah, probably the best narrative I've seen and, uh.
Just wanted to express my thanks.
Well, we talked about turnover and there's not a lot of turnover in these kind of, uh.
We have been pretty fortunate. I have been, um, involved in hiring most, maybe all of our current staff and that. We, we have some turnover. You're always gonna have some of that, but, but really, it, the people who want this type of job
Love it.
love it.
Yep.
And that's why they're in it, so.
Regina, anything to add?
I don't think so. Just thank you guys for your support and keep judging for us.
Good job. Good job.
The motto is once a volunteer, always a volunteer.
I always say, once you get in 4H, you never get out. You start as a kid, you're gonna keep volunteering through, like, the rest of your life. Never stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I suggest, we've been going a long time. I suggest a ten-minute recess.
Okay.
I'll second that request.
All in favor, indicate we're saying hi.
Aye.
Both. All on, uh, Black Hills Works. And I think, uh, the, the order in which
Then others?
they'll appear is, uh,
Your book?
Just go in your, your book, yeah.
On other?
Assuming alphabetical.
Come on up.
Hi. Good, joining? Hello, thank you for giving us some of your time. My name is Andrea Serna and obviously I'm with Black Hills Works. This is my colleague Tammy.
Hi, I'm Tammy Hop, Director of Plantry. Nice to be here. Thank you.
And we are joined by Ms. Jill. Jill, is there anything that you'd like to say? Go ahead. Anything you wanna say?
Um, hello?
Good morning, Jill.
How you doing?
We're doing good. So, we appreciate you being here, Jill.
Thank you for saying that. We, we really enjoy, uh, taking people like Jill with us to come and talk to people like you cause it, it puts a face to what we're asking. And today, we're here to talk about our transportation needs. You've talked about agriculture, uh, you've talked about, um, fire suppression, all incredibly important things. The other, the other industry out here that we are very reliant on is tourism industry. And part of the tourism industry is something that we are able to have a significant stake in. We support it in many ways. We provide different opportunities at Mount Rushmore. Why don't you talk about Mount Rushmore?
We have several individuals who are employed at Mount Rushmore and they have been for many consecutive years. Last year was a little weird for all of us. Um, but even then, they, uh, reported to work a smaller crew, shorter hours. Obviously lots of protocols in place, but for many years, I've been supporting the tour, the tourist in, the tourist, tourists at Mount Rushmore. And they love their jobs. I, there's a fellow that I'm particularly close with. He used to work with my husband, who also works for Xantara, the, the employer of our folks up there and he, he cannot wait. He asks me about Mount Rushmore every week, all year round, until the summer arrives. He, um, gets, uh, autographs from the tourists that are there and is really proud of them. You know, he met somebody from Georgia or the Netherlands. I mean, it, every day it's different for him and he, he just, it is his world all year round, even though it's just a summer job, so. And I guarantee you that the, the visitors to Mount Rushmore have a better experience for it, not just because of Greg, but for all of our employees up there.
And we would've brought one of them with us today, but they're working. So we weren't able to pry them away from their jobs. So we asked Jill to join us. Jill has been a consumer of rapid, of Dial-A-Ride. So she utilizes the transportation system within the city limits. Well, we also provide transportation outside of city limits and so that's what we're looking for support on is, uh, the, the different places that we go in the county that aren't supported by local transportation needs, so, or beyond the time. I mean, it's a limited time.
And Jill's a perfect example. She, I'll let her speak for herself, but just as, by way of introduction, not only does she, uh, go to work at the Susie Capp Art Center every day using Dial-A-Ride, but she is an active participant in Flutter, our all-ability theater program in which I, I think nearly all the time staff has to get you there, so Black Hills Works Transportation makes that experience possible for her. Uh, plus she's doing a Special Olympics track meet tomorrow.
What's tomorrow?
Track and field.
And what are you gonna do in track and field?
Walking softball.
Walking and softball. Are you excited?
Yep.
Have you been practicing?
I'm prac, I'm practicing in the morning.
Good for you. Practiced today when we had to walk down the stairs cause the elevator was broken.
So Jill, what do you do in softball? I used to play softball. What do you do for the softball event?
Um, I, I throw the softball in the field.
It's a, it's a softball throw, so it's dis, it's a distance then.
Can you throw pretty good?
Yep.
Did you win any medals last year?
Yep, I did.
How many medals did you win, Jill?
Whole bunch.
I, I didn't win any medals in softball, so you're way ahead of me, Ms. Jill.
Yep.
Good job.
Are you glad that you had the opportunity to go to Susie Capp?
I'm an artist.
You are an artist.
I'm an art CEO. I'm a tomago.
What do you draw, Jill?
I do, do the hisp with pipe cleaners.
She has these beautiful elaborate heads that have pipe cleaners coming out of them like hair. As you can see, she doesn't have hair, so it's almost like a, a way for her to express herself.
That's fun.
Form your nails. She has beautiful nails.
Does have beautiful nails.
Way for her to express herself because she does have some limitations.
So Jill, um, your hairstyle's in, so a lot of people are, are, are shaving their heads, so in your case, if you don't have any hair, you're in the, in the people that are in style right now.
Cool. Are you all familiar with the Susie Capp Art Center?
Yes.
Yeah, cause I mean, her, her heads, I don't know if that's what you call them, Jill, but they've been sold around the country, if not around the world.
They've been sold around the world.
Yeah.
Pretty awesome.
Yeah.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, doing needlework.
She's doing needlework right now.
Super.
Yeah. But the way that she's able to do that is because we're able to get them where they need to go, transport people where they need to go. And, uh, state and federal funding only goes so far, as you are well aware. Um, our, our state funding covers our, um, home and community-based living. That provides state services, that provides, um, supports in other areas that are specific to basic needs. Well, we all know that basic needs are just basic. What's life without going to a movie or creating art?
Or getting to work. I mean, we do, we, Black Hills Works spends six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to travel in a typical year, more than a million miles, getting Jill and her peers to the lives they live. Um, I think it's close to a quarter of that amount is for employment supports, getting the people we support to work, which of course it benefits our economy. I mean, those same individuals are spending their, spending their wages and, um, enjoying recreation and just being consumers of, of the
Mr. Chair.
all the things we can do in Pennington County.
Commissioner Ross, can I?
No, it seems to me, I can't remember where, but I went to a meeting in maybe in the last six weeks and wasn't Black Hills Works the recipient of a grant for a van?
We, we did receive a ADA accessible van.
So with that, I wanna say congratulations because I saw the competition and
An MPO.
So, good job.
Yes, yes, that's one of the, the opportunities that we do have to actually purchase new vehicles. Last year, we dedicated our fundraising efforts. We do a lot of fundraising, so, I mean, this is just, uh, uh, this would help supplement that, but our fundraising efforts helped us to acquire ten new vehicles. We had to have smaller vehicles because we have smaller groups. Pandemic, thank you very much. So we had to get, uh, minivans to accommodate the smaller groups, so we were able to help support that. But again, we still need people to drive them. We still need the fuel costs. Fuel costs have gone up. I don't know if you've filled your tanks lately, but jumped over three dollars again, so, I mean, there's all these costs associated with these vehicles to make sure that we can get people to anywhere, live the, the lives that they want to, just like us.
I think it was, actually, they granted you dollars for a couple of vehicles
Yes.
on that.
Yep.
And, uh, which is great. I mean, uh, it's super that you apply for things like that because.
We try everything.
Yeah, well, and, and you, and you need to, um, continue to do that. Um, I also, my wife and I are also on a bowling league with several of the Works teams and so we got a number of friends there ourselves and we, we certainly appreciate them all, so.
So you know how important Special Olympics bowling is. You would not believe, Deb, you would not believe the amount of medals that we have seen for bowling. Do you have, do you have bowling medals? Do you bowl? You do though?
Yeah.
They all do. It's amazing.
Playing is a favorite.
That's what I hear about the most is the bowling medals. That places that I go, they're like, Daddy, I have medals. It's usually for bowling.
Yes.
Yep.
And I can't bowl either, so. They're gonna beat me out pretty easy.
You know, I, I really appreciate what you guys do, uh, for hands-on experience. My uncle's been with in Black Hills Works as long as I can remember, but, you know, you guys have gotten him into work, independent living, all that type of things and he's still going, so, uh, the work that you guys do is, is, is very valuable. And eases family members.
Yes, it does.
Puts an ease on, on their, uh, conscience too, so I, I, I really appreciate everything you guys do.
Absolutely. And what happens? I mean, people like Jill are living longer now. So as we all live longer, parents are gonna be passing away and so what happens? Jill still needs somebody, so that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
May I?
Other questions, Kelly? Yes, absolutely.
Ready, Jill?
And do you have any questions?
Your request was?
Uh, three thousand.
Three thousand.
To help support the transportation needs.
Thank you, ma'am.
Specifically those in Pennington County beyond the city limits.
Jill, you're famous. You're on the, on a book. No.
Plus you've signed it, cause you're so famous.
Yeah.
You're gonna sign our books, Jill?
You are?
Yeah.
Do you wanna sign? You got a pen?
He's like, nope, I'm not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one on the list is, uh, Dakota Plains Legal.
Oh no, it's Paul.
Paul and Andrea's who I have down here.
Yes, how we doing?
Oh, how long you been doing this, Paul?
This'll be twenty years.
Yes, sir.
It's getting started.
Yeah, I've done, you know, ninety-five, hundred cases, I think.
Wow.
That's a lot, that's a lot.
That's pretty awesome. Hi, Andrea.
And this is Andrea Rosenberg, my, she's the, the deputy.
Right, I, um, I've been PCAP, uh, public advocate for seven years and I've been at Dakota Plains for eight, so I'm catching up slowly.
She started as a civil lawyer.
That wasn't fun enough.
Andrea's kind of the, the numbers person, but we're asking for a slight increase. I believe it's eleven percent. And, uh, the reason for that is the volume of cases is, is upticking. And the way that, uh, the state delivers the discovery materials now, they used to send you copies, now everything comes in an email. So we have to have somebody downloading all that and separating it and evaluating, so that, that's a slow process. But as you could see, uh, you know, we have some statistics here that, and Andrea can speak to these, but my main one is that we handled six hundred and twelve files last year. Now, I'm in negotiations with the public defender and Judge Feifly to add As and Bs. That's murder cases. I've taken on an A felony this year and I think that would be helpful to the county cause those can be quite expensive when you go to private counsel and, you know, going on twenty-eight years of experience, you know, I'm, I'm ready to do those. So I'd let her speak to some of the statistics.
Sure, so I think that we did put in our letter that, uh, we opened in twenty twenty, three hundred thirty-six clients. So what happens is, um, the court would appoint us to a matter. They sign the order and we pick it up at the courthouse. Uh, and through our client management system, we put, you know, Jane Doe, all her information. And so we have one client listed, but that one client may have multiple charges at the courthouse. They go to jail, they get out, they get in trouble again, they get another file. So the system that we use So the system that we use doesn't track how many court files we uh receive from the courthouse. So what we started doing last year is just doing a hand tally, marks, order, 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 order. Uh and so for the three hundred thirty-six clients that we opened in two thousand and twenty, those three hundred thirty-six people had six hundred twelve files pending at the courthouse, so it's nearly double.
Andrea, give me that number one more time.
Three hundred thirty-six clients, six hundred twelve criminal files.
I did, yesterday, uh Thursday, my my docket for yesterday, I did twelve defendants. And they had, between them, they had twenty-four files. You know, because some people have three, four files. I I have I have a woman right now that's got nine pending felony files, and she's just, another one's coming, you know. And so we count that internally as one. And because it's just too difficult to open up all these things, I like everything in one big file. But we have them all listed, so so sometimes the statistics are a little skewed, and that's what she's explaining.
Right. And so those three hundred thirty-six individuals, there were twenty-three that were facing juvenile matters, juvenile delinquency, uh child in need of supervision if they're running away or skipping school. Uh seventy-one abuse and neglect cases where child protection is involved with that family. That's actually down a little because of COVID. They're they were trying to do alternative routes than taking custody because foster parents are leery of COVID and taking on kids into their household. I expect that'll prob- that's going up. Uh and two hundred forty-two criminal misdemeanor felony probation violations. The majority of our clients still have just one file, but on average, our clients have two. The thirty-nine of our clients from last year had four or more files. And the client that we had with the number, highest number was probably the highest I've ever seen. Fif- he had fifteen files pending at one time. Yeah. He was his problem, not mine. Um and the thing about that is, so when someone has one file, we're opening this file, we're asking for discovery. Maybe we have a couple of court dates, and they plead out, come to a resolution. That takes about three hours. Uh someone with two takes about six, and so you'd think that would increase three, six, nine, twelve, but it doesn't. Because when you're talking about someone that's starting to get about four or more, they get increasingly difficult in terms of the outcome that we're searching for them. Do they need treatment? Do they need an alternative court? Um is their personality a little more difficult when you have fifteen files? Well, yeah, there's a reason he has fifteen files. So it actually is an exponential increase. One of the clients that was typical that had three, thirty-six hours. One of our clients that had four, forty-seven. And so that's also, that is the big driving factor in in the level of our busyness is the people that are picking up multiple felony files. They take a lot more work. And we have had to turn down, I looked back, we turned down about twenty-one clients when the PDO was asking us for conflicts because they were people that had four-plus files or we knew they would be difficult, and we just knew that between the two of us, we didn't have the time to devote to those people.
So can I ask you something, Andrea? And maybe Paul, we have systems in place where we have diversion programs and different um bracelets, and we have um care campus. Did those help with those? I mean, are you are you guys sent or sending people to a lot of these places that we are I and offering these alternatives, and are they working?
Yes, those are the resolutions to the cases, sending people to care campus. We have, you know, uh during the height of the pandemic, if you got if you got a possession charge for narcotics, they would lower it to a misdemeanor, the state would, if they went to care campus, and so we'd get the people over there. We're constantly bringing, you know, it into the specialty courts.
Is it helping?
Yes, it is. A a lot a lot of people that we represent, as you all know, need structure in their life.
Right.
Because on their own, they can't do probation, you know. They they have to have someone checking on them.
And I would say it helps when they want it to help. Um and we have had a number of people that this is, them coming to us is their rock bottom.
Right.
Um and so I've had some diversion cases, like a, you know, a couple. They went to Colorado on a vacation. They were driving back home, did some bird sighting, and they bought marijuana in um Colorado. They didn't have any priors. They went through diversion. They'll never be seen again, and I know it. Um I've got a gal that fled here from another state for various reasons. She, we got her into care campus, out of the jail. She's done, and I mean, my hope is to never see her again. Um same, several clients at care campus right now, and and I do think it's a very good opportunity if they're gonna take advantage of it.
So how many times usually does people have to go through on average in order to get it? I mean, is there, I mean, everybody's different, I understand, but um.
You know, some people can go once and and they they see the light, and some people don't. I had a girl yesterday, we sat in this with Judge Biff Fifeley in the afternoon, and you know, we've been back and forth a number of times, and she's giving her one more shot, and the girl's finally starting to see the light. And and and, you know, she's just turned twenty-one, you know.
Is there any of the programs that have them see the light quicker, or is it just certain people see the light in different programs a different way?
I think Drug Court is a really good program because it gets intense where they have peer pressure. You know, so it's not like going to a counselor and you talk about your problems. It's you go in for your weekly meeting, and you screwed up, and everybody else starts yelling at you, you know. So that helps a lot, you know. And and one thing, just uh that's gonna uptick the the volume real quick here, is there's been a moratorium pretty much on jury trials during the pandemic, and I have three scheduled. I got one today after my birthday, July fifteenth, the on the sixteenth, you know, because they haven't been doing them, and you know, and it's still like once a week right now, but I think that's gonna open up because there's there's a tremendous backlog of people that need to, that wanna go to jury trial.
And I I agree. I think there's so many different programs, and that is a good thing because what won't work for one person would for another. Um and so they what the state's attorney's office does is they keep an eye out for cases that they think, you know, when they're reading the police reports and things, oh, I think there might be a mental health issue. Have you thought about mental health court? And we keep an eye out for it, too. It used to be that when I'd meet with someone, I'd say, okay, you got two options. Go to trial, take a deal from the state. Now it's you have five options. You can go to trial, take a deal from the state, work through diversion, mental health court, drug court, veterans court, DUI court. And I do think that's a benefit, a a huge benefit to the county because, I mean, sending someone with a methamphetamine addiction, keeping them in jail, the arrest itself, it's not gonna stop them from using. It's just not.
Plus, and without the added structure of the specialty courts, they don't, they're not gonna do it. You know, they're gonna get out, and one of the big problems is 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 their environment. They go back to their environment, and then everyone around them gets them back into the problem again. So when you're meeting once a week, and there's there's sanctions and stuff, and and they keep an eye on you, which a regular probation can't do. So very beneficial.
And I mean, the mean, the reason for our request, request for an increase this year is that our hope is to hire another attorney that would be partly public advocate, partly civil, to take on and divide some of the cases a bit more. I do all the abuse and neglect cases. He does all of the felony judges that have court on A and N days, and then we divide everything else. And it still does tend to double book us.
I have a question. Thanks for bringing that up, because I I think as as Deb's learned too, is that a person, you you need someone to follow up and check up and keep track. I mean, with that many cases, a phone call and tracking somebody down makes a world of difference from being a a simple violation, a simple mistake, and setting the structure, as as you guys are saying. So I think, I I know the public defenders are doing something like, they have a person like that that helps follow up on making sure they're making their meanings, doing the follow up to the treatment or courts, and I I see that as a benefit. Uh you guys as lawyers really don't have the time to set that structure.
No.
I I know, but the paralegals, the people, the support staff does that.
Yeah.
Because I'm litigating all day.
Yeah.
And, you know, my paralegal and I are on, you know, the even, you know, constantly all day long. I'm driving home to lunch.
And they, the PDO, they did, they hired a a caseworker, and I think that that individual, particularly when it comes to DSS cases, abuse and neglect cases, she was a former child protection worker, so she knows the language, she knows what DSS is looking for, and she can really assist the PDO's clients um in managing that. And but because of our caseload, that's just something that we're not currently able to do, but we would like to do in the future. And if we had more attorneys, more support staff, I think we'd be able to. And I think that would ultimately save the county money in the future, when particularly if we're big enough to take on the EBCs because those are count causing.
So how many attorneys in your office?
Well, there's three civil attorneys and two criminal.
So there's five attorneys that took on three hundred and thirty-six cases?
There's two of us.
Us.
You two did three hundred and thirty-six?
Oh, yeah, that's
Clients, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
So the contract uh initiated in two thousand terminates in two thousand and twenty-one?
Yes.
So was that a twenty-one-year contract?
No, it 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 was the initial contract was two thousand.
That was, that was my question.
Like we're doing today, we're asking
You're asking for a one-year extension at three seventy-nine five?
Yes.
And then following year, you may be back in.
What I'm gonna ask for, you know, what we're gonna work on is expanding the program to take, you know, and we're we're gonna periodically take on an A and a B now. And do you understand when I when I say A and B? An A is a death penalty case, and a B is a life imprisonment case. And C is up the life imprisonment. Right now, the contract doesn't require us to do As and Bs.
Well, Paul, um Fifeley was saying, remember, that that was way up this year. They had twenty-eight this year, and that's pretty high.
Right, it is.
It's the murders. Murders are very high, so we did take on a murder, and our our board of directors actually prohibits us from taking A, I think it's A B Cs, but maybe just A and Bs because they know with just the two of us handling three hundred thirty-six clients, do we really have the time? But we want to, we'd like to. And I think to answer your question, that our two thousand contract was either a ten or a fifteen-year, and we asked for an increase in two thousand and fifteen, and since that time, we've just been doing year renewals.
Yeah. And let me say, I I remember we upped this a couple of years ago when Busker was here, and Busker was was also on the PDO board. And and Eric, we've been talk, having discussions of 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 doing this. And and I think we need to continue those discussions to get that going because uh it's it's important. I mean, he he's, we just seen his presentation yesterday with the numbers that his his attorneys are seeing and the numbers that you're seeing, we we've got to come up with some solutions, and some of that may come from his budget. Some of them may have, we may have to redo, but I mean, uh I think it's definitely something we need to look at.
We've met with him. We've met with John Murphy, and you know, we're 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 starting to get the ball rolling, and I've discussed this with my director in mission, and he's he's on board with it, so. But for the time being, we'd like to, you know, to ask, you know, to have the board grant what we're asking for, so we can keep working.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Next one on our uh list is G I S. Uh I don't think there's anybody here for that presentation. Uh if you look in your book, uh they're they're basically asking for the same amount. Uh this is a program, uh the Geographic Information System is a program shared with the uh the city. And I think the city's paying the the majority of that portion. Uh our our budget request is, again, the hundred and twenty-two thousand um forty-five dollars and sixty-three cents.
I think that one's a no-brainer just for all the things they do and the cooperation they do with us.
Yep, that's right.
Yep, they do some amazing stuff.
How much are other departments rely on that G I S system?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So the next one I have then is uh Community Health, Tim.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you guys?
Good.
Thanks for having me. Uh my name's Tim Tredart. I am the CEO for the Community Health Center of the Black Hills. Thanks again for all of your support over the years. Our formal request is again, uh same as it was last year, for a hundred and four thousand. Uh for those, I'll give you the brief sort of uh dog and pony sort of introduction to what we do at the Community Health Center. We are a federally qualified health center, uh and we provide basic uh medical, mental uh mental health, uh medical and pharmaceutical care uh for everyone in the uh community. Uh but we provide care on a sliding scale, and so those that qualify uh based on their financial uh status uh can get discounted care uh so that they avoid going through the emergency room, hopefully, avoid going uh and being hospitalized. And obviously, for the individual care, uh that the county themselves would have to pick up the cost for that. So it's kind of a cost avoidance sort of thing uh with your support to us. Um it's been a challenging year for us, obviously, with the pandemic, in terms of uh uh all the stuff that we've had to do to kind of react to that. We're kind of getting back to uh normal uh uh over the the last few months. Um and we're excited about some of the changes that we're gonna be putting in place over the next few years. Uh right after we get done here, I'm going over to across the street to our new One Heart Clinic. Uh that will be opening up here uh right after the fourth. Uh and so I'm checking in. We're putting in a telepharmacy, some fancy telepharmacy sort of equipment over there as well, so I'm going over there to check, take a look at that. Uh and so uh that'll be kind of a a a something for us to shoulder. It'll be, you know, a a loss for a while, while we kind of get that operation kind of going up. But uh so we think it's an important clinic for us to to move forward in growing, to support the care campus, to support everything that's going on there at the One Heart Campus. Uh we'll also be looking over the next couple of years uh at purchasing uh some mobile units so that we can do some more outreach sort of stuff for uh those patient populations that have difficulty sometimes getting to us. Uh particularly for uh as we grow more, I think, into that Box Elder sort of area, how we can do some more outreach into that area uh for folks that have transportation issues and getting to our clinic, uh particularly for the medical side of things. Um we uh rely a great deal uh on what we primarily uh put our um funding that we get from Pennington County to use for is to support uh a lot of what we do in our pharmaceutical area. Uh we have a program that we call our co-pay assistance program, and uh essentially, we've got a lot of folks that may have insurance to come to see us. Uh and we'll prescribe them with medications uh that will oftentimes have really high co-pays uh for them. And so we, uh because of our designation as a federally qualified health center, uh can buy meds pretty cheap. And so uh much cheaper uh generally than what sometimes somebody's co-pay is. And so what we do is we basically use our Pennington County uh funding to basically assist with some of those co-pays. We can then provide them with uh low-cost medications uh and make sure that they are uh, that that isn't a barrier to them uh getting whatever their medications are. Uh and some of the stuff that you guys were were talking about earlier, in terms of, you know, you talk about all those folks that are going through Drug Court, uh oft- oftentimes, it's obviously if they're having a a lot of those substance use issues. Uh we kind of are, I think, a little further upstream than that, obviously, and and recognizing a lot of times people uh that are getting into those situations have some underlying issues. They may have mental health issues that they're dealing with, that they need to be medicated medicated more appropriately for. They may have obviously some counseling, you know, family issues that we need to see if we can't get to the the root of. Uh and so our goal uh with you guys' support is basically to make sure that cost isn't a barrier for them getting some of that access that they need. What questions?
Tim, tell me your coverage area.
We uh uh cover through Pennington County. Uh I'd say probably about eighty percent of our patients come from uh Rapid City area, five seven seven oh one, oh two, uh oh nine. Um but we'll have patients probably, we'll have patients that will pull from throughout the Black Hills. We're the only federally qualified health center for about a hundred and fifty mile radius, but probably about ninety percent of our patients come from Pennington County.
Thank you.
Tim, at one of our meetings, you were you were talking, I I think we're turning, doing, having some discussions on the word community help, maybe changing names.
We've had that discussion, yeah. Uh one of the things that you see with a lot of, there's a lot of misnomers about community health centers themselves, uh and that there's a sense that since we do provide care for uh those that are uninsured, uh that they, that somebody needs to qualify in order to be able to come through our doors. And that's not the case. Anybody can be seen at a community health center. You can be insured, you can be, you know, a multimillionaire and come to a community health center. The only thing that's financially based at a community health center is whether you're going to apply for a sliding scale. And so that's the thing that's, that is sometimes misunderstood. And so we are, we're toying with the board that will take a look in terms of whether we're going to look at rebranding basically that community health center. Because there is kind of that stigma that it's just a place for, for, for low income, that, you know, they have to qualify for it. And so you see a lot of community health centers, Horizon Healthcare, here is, throughout most of the rural areas within state of South Dakota. They're a federally qualified health center, but they don't have community health center necessarily in their title. And so the idea is that as you branch out into these areas to make sure that that's not, uh, uh, an obstacle for people, you know, that might not feel comfortable coming to a community health center.
I, I just wanted to bring that up because I think there probably is maybe some stigma in the community with it. You know, I've, I've used your community health center and I use O Y A T quite a bit now. So I mean, I have to, to say, the service is changing for everybody magnificently. I mean, a few years ago, things were a little bit slower at O Y A T. And I've, I've been in your clinic and the service is great. I mean, and I've been to urgent care and actually have had to wait longer there than either of those other places when I compare them now. So I, I think the service, both of you guys' services are right up there, if not better than.
Yeah, I've been at the Community Health Center now for about eleven years. Before that, I always went Monument and worked at Monument. And so I've worked with, you know, providers from throughout, you know, the community really. And I would stack our providers up against anybody that they are definitely, yeah, high quality.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your support.
Good work.
I have a behavior management system listed as next, Terry.
Hello.
Come on up.
Thank you. How are you guys today?
Good, pretty good.
Thanks for, by the way, thanks for having us. I know you guys all have the letter from our C E O, Linda. My name's Terry Corgan. I am the Associate Executive Officer and Clinical Director at B M S now. Many of you probably have worked with Randy Allen in the past. He's retired, so I've kind of taken on some of those duties recently with our services. So you have the letter in front of you. We're going to stick with our, our request that we've had for the past several years, even though we know kind of the census numbers and the number of people in the county are going up a little bit. But just really want to, want you to know that it's, the, the support that you provide is so vital in many ways. You know, as I've been here and listening, listening to the attorney speak, listening to all of our concerns and, and many, many of those projects like specialty courts and, and care campus we partner with. We are working now, obviously, on a new project coming down the way. And we're going to be seeing what that looks like. But, you know, this year, you can see the numbers there. We've served all the past year, two thousand seven hundred and eighty three clients in Painton County. Painton County is just one of the counties that we serve. We serve ten additional counties as a community mental health center, providing mental health care in various forms to adults with serious mental illness as what, as well as children with seriously emotional disturbances. We currently have some of our staff in thirteen Rapid City area schools, as well as New Wonderwood, Stinch Barn, and several in the Northern Hills areas as well. But as far as Painton County, you know, we're in, out, kind of out in most of those schools now, providing support to kids who probably wouldn't have gotten mental health support if their families weren't able to get, get to the clinic. So we're pretty proud of, of those services too. So, and as you know, we do provide our, our emergency services, sort of like urgent care for mental health through the care campus at the Crisis Care Center. Last year, we served nine hundred and sixty one individuals eighteen and over through that, through that process. So we certainly appreciate so much what you've done to help us be able to do those things over the years and would like to continue to count on them. So, thank you.
Questions, Terry?
You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
You do.
Lloyd and I have gotten to travel a little bit together on some, some fun projects for diversion things and stuff like that.
And you still like him, that's wow.
I do. Always enjoy that, so.
Need to visit.
Thanks, Terry.
Any questions?
No.
No questions.
Pretty self explanatory.
We appreciate you guys and thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you. Next one I have is the Council on Aging. And I think it's Dale and Doris, right?
Watch out for Miss Doris, she's a firecracker.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. We're here.
Doris Ann.
Yes, this is Doris Ann. Thank you very much. And this is April Malik. She's my secretary and also the Director of Mental Luson and Senior Center. As you know, we appreciate everything you've done for us and we appreciate it so much. This year has been a year, a terrible year, basically, for a lot of people. And we've helped a lot of seniors in the area and we just really appreciate all you've done. Just to remind you, the areas that we cover are the Canyon Lake Activity Center, Mental Luson and Senior Center, Hill City Senior Center, South Dakota Department of Human Services, Meals on Wheels, Western Resources for Independent Living, R S V P, Adult Daycare of the Black Hills, and Pennington County Housing. So, and R D C, R D C Tenant Services. And we appreciate all you've done for us, thank you. Meals on Wheels this year has asked for at least twenty seven thousand dollars and we provided. Thanks to you. Seven thousand went to Mental Luson for a brand new six burner stove.
Ten burner.
Ten burner, excuse me, that's right. Twenty five hundred went to Keystone for a new refrigerator. Five thousand went to Department of Human Services for tickets for rapid ride and dial ride for the clients to go to doctor's appointments, dental services, church events, grocery shopping, and other necessary transportation needs. We had a meeting with members of Pennington County yesterday and found out that Meals on Wheels will be probably extending their expenses forty percent over the next year.
Expanding their program?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So that, that was kind of a shock to us, but we'll do what we can to help them out. Department of Human Services is also on the increase. And she didn't say how much exactly, but we'll be helping them out. And Hill City will be requesting funds probably to finish out the commercial kitchen that they're doing in the new extensive other building that they're having refurbished and remodeled over the next year after the motorcycle rally in August. So that's all we have for this time. So is there any questions?
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Connect?
Question, but just a comment because of all the committees that I'm on, this is probably one of the most rewarding. Because for so little, we do so much, in my opinion. And the stuff that we do, you know, it's, it's for us aging old geezers that have gray hair.
Some of us have.
Somebody's got to take care of us, so thank you for all you do too.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Life's going full circle. You got the youth city council right behind you, you got. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
We got the youth council coming up presented after you guys are done and, and you guys are doing what.
They are great. I've had experience with them, with Mental Luson, and they come in and did their senior prom, just to put a plug in for them. And it was awesome, we had a blast. And thank you very much.
And that's why I tell you, Doris Ann is a firecracker. I've known her for a long time and she's always been a go getter.
So Doris Ann, we're probably pretty positive with your request, providing that you continue to keep her on as our liaison with your.
Love it, we love it.
Okay.
We find out different things from him too, and it also helps us a lot.
One of the strangest requests was for the Hill City Senior Citizen Center. Because once they started doing line dancing, they, they asked for a defibrillator.
Yes, we also have one in Mental Luson.
That is funny.
I had to end it with that.
Well, thank you very much. Have a great year, have a great summer. We appreciate all you've done.
Thank you, April. Thank you, Doris Ann.
Amazing job for our seniors.
Okay, next up, Brian, Pennington County Housing.
Food for thought, for Pennington County Housing, we actually give the space in the building. If you want to talk a little bit about that, Brian, I didn't know that for Meals on Wheels. And they, that's why we knew about Pennington County Housing, they were going to expand because we decided to make the lobby, if I'm correct, smaller. So that program was more important than just having a bigger lobby. That was due to Brian Akbak and then bringing that to our committee.
Yeah, so River Ridge High Rise over here, north, right over, across the street from the Civic Center. It's the five story white high rise that's pretty recognizable. That commercial kitchen serves the Meals Program, the Meals on Wheels, the, the, the remote sites, that, that hot food coming that, that serves that program comes out of that commercial kitchen. And we should all pat ourselves on the back because we're providing that commercial kitchen to the Meals Program for, for no, at, at no cost to them. And I would like to think that we are pretty responsive to them as far as addressing any of the maintenance issues. They have an electrical capacity problem right now that we're going to be addressing soon. With more meals going out during the pandemic, they, they had to have a completely different path, a lot more traffic on the property. We're pouring a sidewalk right now to kind of, to, to basically accommodate them. So we recognize, I've had conversations with Mr. Larson, I hope I'm representing that correctly. And he's, he's communicated to me that the, that the, you know, that the need is going to be growing, going forward. So we did, we moved out of the dining room during the pandemic so that they could serve more meals. So not only do they have the commercial kitchen, but they have the dining room at the property. And we're currently, we kind of have a handshake agreement with them to go ahead and let them continue to, they need that space. So I'll be asking the board in the future what we want to do with that. I think that we need to be open to maybe, you know, is, is that a, is that a, is that an agreement? We want to maybe do something, you know, in the future? So, but yeah, I'm really proud of, of what our, you know, of that agreement that we have and what we're able to do for the Meals Program.
And we pay for one of their F T Es, don't we?
Yeah, yes. And one of their employees that, over at Memorial Park Apartments, we actually pay for one of their employees at, at one of the remote sites. So, but, yeah, so, yeah, we're, and, and, and sitting in the back here, it's, I, I think I'm maybe one of the last. And it's, you know, just, it's, it's just very, very proud to be, you know, to hear all of these programs and all of this. All of these good hearted people doing good work and, and, and I think that, you know, more citizens of Pennington County should probably come to one of these meetings. So, but anyway, I am here because we have a housing crisis. And I know I was here a few months ago and I think this is becoming more and more quantifiable as we move forward. I personally picked up the phone four weeks ago and called pretty much every big landlord in Rapid City. And they said, Brian, we have no vacancies, there's just no vacancies in Rapid City. And I think we are, as a board, as a housing authority, we have, we know we need to be, we need to be developing. Everybody and their brother right now and their sister and, and whatnot is, has plans to develop. We have this great demand and just not enough capacity. And so what I'm here today is, you know, and I want to thank you for giving me this time. I would just like to, you know, I know you as county commissioners, you have a lot, you have this huge responsibility. And I, you know, thank you for that. And I know you have to be very discerning with the funds that, you know, come through the county. And as you're discerning those funds, whether it's on a, you know, on an annual, you know, out of an annual budget or, you know, some federal funding that you've got, you know, I would like us to be, you know, I would like for you to consider us to be a partner in, in the, in the development. What I've done is I've provided you some, some documents. And it's really just kind of the basis of a plan. And I just kind of wanted to walk you through who we are as a housing authority, why we would be a good partner for you. Because I do think it's in the county's interest, I think it's in the city's interest. And we'll be getting, I'll be getting around to talk to Hill City and Wal. I think every form of government out there has an interest in providing a, a sufficient level of affordable housing for its citizenry. I guess in my, my, my spiel, I would like to offer why us, you know, as this local housing authority. Well, for one thing, we've been here for fifty years, we've been a partner. We've just expressed what we're doing with the Meals Program. We're a partner in the community, we're recognizable, we're not going anywhere. It's our mission to provide this, this affordable housing.
Hold on just a sec, Brian, I think we're all trying to find the affordable housing.
It got, they are tucked in the front of the binders, so I don't know if you.
It's in the front of your binder?
Uh, I don't have it in the front of my binder.
I got it. Your guy next to you, Lloyd. Travis needs, you need some help.
I don't have one.
You, you didn't find it?
Well.
I'll go around and make a copy quick.
Okay.
It was just a sec, Brian.
Brian, is this the same one we looked at the other day?
It was.
Because I can probably, I took it and I broke it down to a square foot. Cost per square foot, based on the hundred or thousand square foot unit, the rent per square foot. And anyhow, I, the thing really flowed nice, so I liked it.
Excellent.
I mean, I'm talking the, the thirty five and sixty five unit scenarios.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing I might point out, being on that commission, is that the housing authority has one thousand four hundred and seventeen vouchers. Each voucher is basically one year's rent, if I understand that?
Yeah, it's actually more than that. It's, it does not have an expiration. It's fourteen hundred and seventeen families that we could be serving every single month. And I think what Commissioner Ross Connect is alluding to, and if I'm misrepresenting.
Well, last month, we had one hundred and two that weren't being used.
Exactly. So because if, if, if HUD called us today and said, Brian, we're going to triple the number of vouchers you have in your local community. If we don't have the units for those people to go find, it's not doing us any good. And I'll give you an example of this. Recently HUD approved seventy thousand emergency vouchers across the country. We were not one of those recipients. We had some local people in the community that were disappointed that we didn't get those vouchers. They actually wanted me to pick up the phone and call HUD and ask why didn't we get those vouchers? And they didn't because the reason we didn't get the vouchers is because we're under utilizing the program that we have. HUD knows, HUD knows those numbers. I submit them, we submit them every month as part of our, you know, as, as part of that process of, of, of notifying HUD on our utilization. So again, people can't live in a voucher, they need an apartment, the voucher helps us just pay the rent. So anyway, we, we probably missed an opportunity locally to get however many vouchers this time because of the fact that we just don't have the housing capacity to even serve the program that we already have.
So Brian, tell the rest of the story. So what the rest of the story is, is many people took those vouchers and had to turn them back because they, and, and with forethought, Brian knew that.
Yeah.
That you can have all the vouchers you want, but if you don't have places for people to stay. So many of those communities that he's talking about, that, because we didn't get, we didn't want that opportunity, they had to turn them back for the same reason why we didn't take them. They didn't, they couldn't use them.
Yep, and actually, I actually, yesterday I took a phone call, Sioux Falls Housing wants to give up some of their emergency vouchers. So the, the question is, is will Pennington take them? And my response is, we will take them, but I'm, I just don't think, I think it would be just a little bit disingenuous for us to apply for them and tell HUD that we need them here. But if, if they want to just give us those vouchers, then we'll take them. But I'm not, I, we're, I just think that we need to be very careful about making any claims that we're going to be really successful in, 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 you know, in serving those, in servicing those vouchers. I'll, we'll take every, every assistance that HUD will give us. But we're not right now in an environment where I can even apply for this assistance because I know that the, that the housing capacity is just not there.
Question. Some of these vouchers, me and my wife, we, we've got some rentals. And I think our rent's higher than normal. You know, I, I, I know it doesn't quite qualify for section eight as far as the rents. And I, I feel that's where it's. And I I feel that's where it should be. And I'm getting told that my rents ain't high enough now by other people. That that rents should be, you know, what I'm renting for twelve hundred dollars a month should actually be sixteen. And if is that what we're seeing in our community and if are these vouchers for what you're saying? Are, it's not enough to even get them into those. That's why you're not finding them.
Yep. So you're, you are absolutely, and I wrote down two things when I was wanting to come up here that I wanted to touch on, lack of supply, which. And rents are on the increase.
Yeah.
That's the other, that's the other leg of this housing crisis. As housing prices are going up, sale prices are going up, it's driving more people to the rental market. Um more more demand on the on the rental market drives up the cost of those rental units. So we have, um it's, it's not, um so we've had a number of long-term relationships with landlords. Who are calling us now saying, we don't want to participate in section eight anymore. Because we know we can raise our rents to the point, we can keep our properties full at a higher rent. And we don't have to be in the middle of some of this regulatory thing that is section eight. So I hope I answered your question.
You did, but I I just want to share that, you know.
Change your standards.
Well, stop and think about it. These houses, houses have gone up medium income from eight, one eighty.
Yeah.
You know, what I, what I bought for eighty or ninety and can rent out for eight hundred dollars a month is all on my financing. Because I'm not doing it cash.
Yeah.
I'm not a cash investor. I'm borrowing the money and and renting it out. While you, th- these housing prices go up to two hundred and twenty, two hundred and fifty, your payments. For that property for a rent, for someone who's going to buy it for an investment, you gotta make ten percent.
Yep.
So if their payment's eighteen hundred dollars, you've got to charge two thousand.
We have a little bit of discretion at the local level with regard to where those voucher payment standards are set. So what Commissioner Ross Connect was talking about, that we could serve fourteen hundred and seventeen vouchers. We ultimately, they give us like eight point three million dollars to do that. We, the 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 county, the 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 housing of board could say, well, we're going to set, we're going to take our, we're going to take up. Uh our voucher payment standards up to a hun- it's all based off of this fair market rent that HUD publishes.
Yeah.
They're behind.
Yeah.
But they recognize that they're behind, so they let housing authorities say, well, we're going to go a hundred, up to a hundred and twenty percent of the fair market rent. We could even request a waiver from HUD to go above that. The problem is, they're still only going to give us the eight point three million dollars. So that fourteen hundred and seventeen vouchers that Commissioner Ross Connect um, you know, graciously reminded us of. We're not going to serve that. Because if we have to, you know, if we're have to increase, you know, if we're at a hundred and thirty percent of.
Yeah.
We're only still working, what has to happen at the federal level is there has to be an accurate fair market rent. So that we can create a accurate voucher payment standard off of that. And then the funding has to increase with that. Um because that that it's it's, you know, it's, while we have the, like I say, while we have the discretion to set that voucher payment standard. We don't have the, we don't have any way of generating any more of that, you know, of that money that needs to to pay the rent.
I just wanted to share with you, as a person who who has rentals and. It it's, we're going through ours right now. Our insurance went up, the taxes went up, so we got to raise the rent. And it's not that I can kick this person out and make more rent. We don't, we, I've got people I haven't raised a rent on in five years.
Yeah.
Even longer, but I'm going to have to now.
Yeah.
And it's, we used to do it when we change, we changed residency, we'd get up to market, but. I got one that I actually subsidize.
Mm-hmm.
Cause they've been in there for twenty-five years and I, we're, the payments, their rents less than what my payment is on them.
Yep, yep. And Commissioner LaCroy, this is a story I'm hearing over and over and over and over again from from other.
I might, I might add one thing. You know, the rent is based on cost and market.
Yeah.
And so cost, you got the land costs, you got the cost of the building, you got the cost of the appliances, you got soft cost insurance utilities. Uh I just want to point out, as Brian goes on with his presentation, the one advantage that the housing authority has is that we're land-rich. We own the land. We don't have to go out and buy the land. All these other outfits that come to Rapid City and they want to. Offer affordable housing, guess what? They got to go buy land at three and four dollars a square foot.
Yeah.
And then and then the rent's got to adjust that. So this is uh one advantage that the housing authority has, and Brian will explain that.
Well, the other thing is, is in section eight, um I'm not a big fan of section eight. I'm more the fan that um these units that we want to move forward on are for elderly, disabled and veterans. So I think that market right there for us is huge before we worry about section eight and and. Those vouchers that we're talking about. That's, that's my opinion personally from seeing that process. Because again, um the need is for those three entities and we serve them and we serve them well. And when you can do that in bigger, and that that volume has increased as well. So if you can do those three entities, that takes a lot of that market that you're saying that people can't afford or that workforce housing. Or that, you know, because it it's just a huge market compared to what all they're saying on the workforce. If you start looking at those three entities. Um and we've proven that in Pennington County Housing because of the units that we have already. And the units that, like I said, that we could serve for the future. So I like what you're saying, Lloyd. And I I truly believe on section eight, if 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 it's going to be successful, it's going to have to go with the market and the market rents. For the future, if that's where it's going to help. But I still believe if you're going to put your time and energy into community. Um in federal assistance, it should be for the people that have worked, the people that have served our country and the people with disabilities that really need it. So to me, um from being low income myself, I think that's, it it's, for me, it's a priority. Because they have done their due diligence and it's something that um, it's well-used money.
We're going to allow Brian to continue on though.
Okay.
Brian.
Yep. So as Commissioner Ross Connect, um so uh you know, again, we're getting back to why us. Um we do have undeveloped land. And as we get back into here, I've actually listed, I've included some maps for you. Uh because um I think it's as part of your evaluation, um you need to know where this is right now. Uh I I would also say that, you know, we're we're not, we have cash. Um uh you know, showing all of our cards right now, we have two million dollars. Um I've been talking with the board, two million dollars of our own funds. So we've really done a good job as a housing authority. While you haven't seen development, what what the housing authority's done is. They've acquired land and we've paid off debt. And so we're to the point now where our properties that have no debt. Can begin to cash flow new properties. And I'll talk a little bit about that more going forward. Another thing that you would see by entering into an agreement with us as a housing authority is we're not going to charge a developer fee. You know, a developer is going to go out, they're going to get their financing, there's going to be some type of hell, uh South Dakota housing, if it's a tax credit property or home. They're going to, there's an approved developer fee that that developer can take. And if, even if they're doing the development that they're on, they can put that right in their own pocket. And as we've talked before, that that developer fee for us, we're not taking the developer fee. That can go into brick and mortar, that can go into paving a parking lot. That's, 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 that's a cost that we're not looking, um we're, we're here to increase affordable housing. So we're looking for every single dollar that we can, that we can have to uh, you know, to pu- to push that forward.
I'll hire usually those developer fees, because I know Lloyd Properties do those.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't have that. I I can follow up with you on that.
You're going to be looking at six percent roughly.
Yeah, okay.
So a hundred thousand, I mean, a man, that'd be six percent of a man. It's pretty significant.
Um and then, again, we've been here for fifty years and as I met with the audit, or we just finished our audit yesterday. And one of the questions the auditor asked me was, are you going to be in business in a year? That's one of the questions they ask you. Is this a going concern? Well, I would like to think we're going to be here in a year and I'd like to think we're going to be here in fifty years. So um and and not only that. But our mission isn't going to change. Our mission today, fifty years ago today or fifty years from now. Is going to be providing housing to um, you know, to affi- to families that are, that are low income. I feel like we can be part of this conversation where we're talking about workforce housing. But, and and that's what I'm doing here today, but by definition, those workforce housing families that that we're all talking about. Qualify as low-income families according to the federal definition. So. So anyway, we're not, we're not looking at, again, taking the developer fees. We're not looking at after ten years. Uh you know, dumping this property off onto somebody else and moving into another property where we're developing and taking developer fees. We are here to, my goal would be, once we're into this uh property, is to get it paid off as quickly as possible. And have this one cash flow another one. So anyway, that's, I think there's some um, there's, there's some comfort with working with us. I I don't know if you are all aware, but this, I'm I'm assuming everybody's been aware of this study that's been out. And um it's uh was, it was uh paid for by the Vicar of its foundation and it's a, and if you don't have this, that's shame on us. I'll get you, actually, I might have some copies. I don't know. I think I gave, did I give you?
Yep.
I've got one, Brian.
If not, I'll get you some more. And it's a, it was a study, again, paid for by the Vicar of its foundation. And it really recognizes, it's trying to push forward. And in that study, they really, and this again, kind of goes back to twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. They recognized back then that we were like thirty-five hundred units short in in uh in Rapid City. That's a Rapid City study. And uh they really addressed three goals that they would like to accomplish by, you know, through the study. Increasing housing inventory accessibility and stability. Um I think that that's, you know, we, through our development, we're doing that. Reducing housing insecurity and its long-term conse- consequences. Um and then uh, you know, we're less, we're trying to lessen the burden, trying to keep rents low enough. Where families are not um paying more than thirty percent of their income. I'm sure you're asked all the time, what is affordable housing? Well, affordable housing, and I'm trying to, and if I'm, if I'm too far. Outside of of what's right, affordable housing to me, the definition are, is rents and utilities. That don't exceed thirty percent of a family's income. Um that's the definition. And I, people are tired of hearing me say it. There's three hundred and thirty-one million people in this country. There's three hundred and thirty-one definitions of what that is. I mean, as far as well, the amount. But if we can agree that all three hundred and thirty-one million are looking for rent. Or mortgages or whatnot, thirty percent of their income or less.
I think bottom line, people have changed it so they can get a funding source in order to call it something else. So that's what I've seen through TIFs or anything else, is that they've changed that according to workforce housing, sustainable housing. I mean, everybody's calling it something else, but um low income used to be affordable housing. And then it started changing when people needed money for other housing projects. To me, that's, that's what I've seen anyway. And then I've seen, like I said, the main thing is a stick, sustainable housing for the future. Instead of people building stuff today, that's the biggest thing I'll keep saying. And just since I was a kid. Um you see people get kicked out of their places and stuff. After ten years, it's not sustainable because they kick everybody out and then they sell it for more money. So this housing authority doesn't do that. So I call it sustainable housing for the future. Which is actually going to keep those three levels of people, we talked about elderly, disabled and veterans. In the same stability as they were ten years ago or twenty years ago. It won't be sold out from underneath of them. And they won't have to be moving or thinking that the next step is, holy cow, are these people gonna, you know, raise the rents or do something else different? It's sustainable because it, it's always the same criteria. It's, it's always the same criteria. And if you can live by that, it's a lot simpler in your life to not have to worry about that one step. Cause what you do in more low income, and if you've been in there, it's more crisis most of the time on money. And what you're going to spend it on. So when you have some stability in your housing, that's the first step in the crisis that lowers that level of. Okay, I'm, I can't make it and this is going to be like this for ten years, it's not going to be like this for two or three years. Because these people are going to change their rents or do something else. So since I've been on here, um it's really weird. I didn't know they did all this stuff. And I think me and Ron are getting our eyes open for a lot of things. It's amazing what what they do. And what they have done for people over the years. And I'm not into just giving people whatever. I I just not. I think you should work for it. That's why I said there's those categories. But it's exciting to see what Pennington County can do. And kicks the butt in in this, in this arena since we've been in there. And it's just been a couple of months, but I'll, I'll give the credit to Brian because he has the passion. He has shown us and opened all of our eyes going, wow. Uh Fred Eisenbrenner that's been on there for one. He, most of the time, he's like, okay, without being rude to Fred. But he even said, man, this is exciting to be on here now.
So we've been asked by other groups to participate financially in housing. And so as I'm a praiser, I sit there and look at their options. I want to, I want to get the most for the dollar.
Yep.
So right now, this presentation is what I see, getting most for the dollar. And I, I'm not sure we're going to commit. But if we do, this would be the direction I want to go.
And I hope I'll be able to even uh to to even show more of an an invest- or a a return on your investment. As part of that, as part of this study that was done, again, the the focus is workforce housing. Um in that, they really identify, they really identify some categories. And they're, they're looking to serve hospitality workers, childcare providers, waitstaff, nursing assistants, forestry workers, building maintenance. Construction workers, you know, we have plumbers in Rapid City right now that are are plumbers that can't find housing. And they really identify, uh on the study, they really identify a wage spread of twenty thousand dollars all the way up to fifty thousand dollars. That that, those are really the families today that are kind of being left behind. And um I guess what I'm representing with our, with our development is, is when I pencil this out. Because we're going to have the same concerns that what Commissioner LaCroy talked about, because there's going to be some debt on this property. Is is that we would develop a property where we're, we are serving those families at thirty-two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Up to sixty-one thousand fifty. So we're, we start within the range and then we get a little bit farther out. I will also say that this study goes back to twenty seventeen and we've all kind of recognized that wages have been going up. I mean, you can get a Mc- I was at McDonald's yesterday and apparently I can get a job there now for thirteen dollars. And that's great. But I do think that the, I do think that the window has probably changed a little bit with where we are with with Sal- with wages. And and income. So my proposal would be, again, we're serving thirty-two thousand four hundred and eighty up to sixty-one thousand. That sixty-one thousand dollars, by the way, that's eighty percent of the current area area median income and less. That's still by definition, by federal definition, uh low uh, those families would qualify today for public housing. The problem is that we just don't have enough public housing. So any, any questions about?
Yeah, one question to John. You know, he just mentioned wages. And I I I looked at yesterday, when you talk about thirteen dollars an hour, fifteen dollars an hour, twenty dollars an hour. You're making thirty-five thousand or four, is it thirty-five or forty? If you're making twenty dollars an hour.
Yeah, you're about.
I think you're at forty thousand.
Yep, about forty-two.
Forty, forty-two. So you know, if you're look, looking at the, I mean, prime example. I mean, yes, the wages are finally going up. You're seeing thirteen, fourteen. And and I had this discussion at the Youth and Family Services Board, I mean, just the other day too. For when you're talking the low income is, the standard is seventeen thousand and thirty-four thousand dollars per family of four.
Yeah.
Thirty-four thousand. And you're talking, and they start using the same terms as as you are. Well, we can go up to a hundred and twenty percent of low, wow, come on, you guys.
Yeah.
And uh we've, Vicky Lowery talked about this, that, you know, she's on some of the federal boards and she goes, yeah, there just isn't a president out there. That wants to raise what the low income poverty level is because they'd be known for putting the most people into poverty. If you raise it up to thirty thousand dollars a year. I I just wanted to point that out. With those numbers, the wages. It's good to put the wage, wages at what those numbers are because that's a forty-hour week. Twenty bucks an hour, you're making forty, forty-two.
Well, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Plus, like Brian had told us, the sixty-one thousand is not just one income. Sometimes it's two or three in order to get that income. To get to sixty-one in order to make it, you know what I mean, sixty-one in the household.
Yeah. Plus I wanted to point out to Youth Council that they got to make thirty-five bucks an hour to make a good living these days.
Hey, I don't make thirty-five bucks an hour.
So if I might just, I'm sorry, commissioners, the the one thing to keep in mind with the the current wage pressure. Uh all the indicators right now is that what we're seeing now is a. now is a temporary increase. Uh, workforce participation is a drop to sixty percent. Once people get back in the workforce, once the schools are fully open and parents can come back to work, you're going to see that pressure drop. So what we're seeing right now is temporary.
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. And maybe I missed it, maybe you already talked about it. How many individuals are already utilizing housing through?
Yep. So we have five hundred units of public housing. Um, twenty-eight of those units, twenty-eight of those five hundred units are out in Wall, South Dakota. Uh, the rest of the public housing that we have is in Rapid City. We also have this voucher program that we keep talking about. That's fourteen hundred and seventeen vouchers. We could go up to that. Right now, we're serving about thirteen, about, about a hundred less than that, about thirteen, thirteen, fifteen. Uh, our, uh, our jurisdiction, if you will, is Pennington County. So we are serving those vouchers, uh, you know, anywhere there's, anywhere where there's a landlord that wants to work with us in Pennington County. Uh, we also have a sixty-one unit property that we developed as a tax credit property back in nineteen ninety-eight. That also sits over there right across the parking lot from this River Ridge that I was telling you about. So there's the white high-rise and then there's this kind of Z-shaped building over there. That's Memorial Park Apartments. That was developed on the, as sixty-two and older. You have to be sixty-two and older to live there. Um, we also have a twenty-four unit, uh, townhouse complex, um, just south of the hospital, Black Fox. Um, that's, uh, been fin, it's, it's financing is all with home. It's through South Dakota Housing. And, uh, again, twenty-four of those units. We have a fifteen-unit complex, uh, up in, uh, up, up on the north side. It's their apartments. They're ones and twos. Then we have a real development property in Hill City, South Dakota. That's twenty-four units. They're all one bedrooms, but there is rental assistance there. So the, the families that move in there, uh, pay rent based on their income. Not all of our housing today is subsidized, but, um, but Hill City is. Public housing is subsidized, you know. Um, the only, the only three that we have right now that are not subsidized are Memorial Park, Black Fox, and Harney View. Um, and then we have a real development property, a twenty-five unit real development property in New Underwood. Um, and that also has a subsidy with it. So all total, uh, we have six hundred and forty-nine of our own units plus up to fourteen hundred and seventeen. So we could, we could be assisting locally today if, if market forces weren't at, work against us here. We could be assisting in, in, in excess of two thousand families a month.
Wow.
Okay. We drilled you, didn't we?
He's good at it.
You know, it just brings to mind that if we had enough housing for, you know, and these units that you own versus having to use the vouchers, that would kind of relieve some of the, the stress on the current market, too.
Well, there you go. And the, the units that I proposed to our board, um, while, while it, there wouldn't be any restrictions to use Section Eight there, the, 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 actually the fair, the voucher, the, the rents would be at a, at an amount above the voucher payment standard, similar to what Commissioner LaCroy was talking about. So we're keeping the rents low, but they wouldn't fit within even our own voucher payment standard. So we're not developing this property thinking, well, we're going to develop it and then use our own vouchers to help pay the rent. We're not doing that. We're, we're setting, we're setting our own rents at an amount above the voucher payment standard. So we're not really, you know, as far as another developer out there or, or a tax credit property that has come to rely on those vouchers, um, from, because that's, that's what their tenants need. Um, I don't really look at us being in competition with that because, again, our own voucher, our own rents would be set at a, at a level that's above the voucher payment standard. We're still serving, uh, by definition, a low-income family, but we're not serving to, uh, to be on Section Eight, you have to be at fifty percent of area median income and less. So that's a, that's a lower, you know, that's a lower, um, threshold with regard to that assistance. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Yep. The other thing that I wanted to draw your attention before I talk about land is, you know, where, Brian, where does this two million dollars come from? So really, we have, in your packet there, I, I wanted to, so here's, here's how we do business. We have a central administration, uh, department, if you will. And we derive management fees on them, off of the properties that we own. Um, it's, it's just a fee that Huddle allows us to charge each property, um, for the ongoing management of, of those properties, uh, for the ongoing, you know, payroll, all of the, all of the things that are day-to-day. And then the three other properties on there, Harney View, Mahilio Manor, and Memorial Park, those are properties we've developed and they're paid off. So we're building up some pretty good reserves in those properties and we don't know why. They're in really good shape. And other private developers across the country, as they pay off debt in, in, in a property, they begin to cash flow other properties off of that, off of that, uh, you know, off of that debt relief that they've got. And I just don't see any reason why we wouldn't do the same thing. If we maintain healthy operating reserves in all of our properties, that we could, we could, we could today put in two million dollars into a property. And the other thing I wanted to draw your attention by this is the projected cash flow. Those properties are projected to have about three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year in cash flow. So you're not going to see me here next year saying, hey, we did this deal last year, county, and I need some help because it's not cash flowing. We have, we have the financial wherewithal to, uh, to help a property, uh, get started, you know, get through those first years of debt. Um, and we, again, that's, that's where I would look at. We have enough cash flow here to be able to, uh, you know, to, to basically pay the mortgage on it. So any questions about our funding or how we derive our funding or? Uh, then the next thing is, is I, so that's a, that's a big thing that we have. And then the other, the other item that I wanted to talk a little bit about is the land that we have. Um, as Commissioner Ross Connect, uh, stated, we are, we are land-rich. Um, up on the north side, and I hope, I don't know if, are they, they are colored?
It's by my house.
Right next to Lloyd's.
Yep. So we have-
It's pretty close. Vicky Powers Park, those properties.
So we have a seven-acre that, that, uh, there's, you should see two red boxes on the first picture. The, the first red box is a one acre, or one of those is the smaller is a one-acre lot. And then the bigger box is a seven-acre parcel right across the street there from, uh, Vicky, uh, Vicky Powers. So that's a one-acre parcel and a seven-acre, uh, parcel there. And, uh-
So Brian?
Yeah.
What is the land right to the, uh, as I look at the seven-acre parcel, what is the land right adjoining to it? It's a darker color. Is this some kind of a developed?
Um-
That's a park.
That's a park?
Vicky Powers Park.
A walking circle.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Like a dog.
Okay.
That's Vicky Powers Park. Um, Gary.
Okay.
And then on the next page, um, I wanted to draw your attention. We also have an undeveloped piece of property over off of East Minnesota Street. It's a, it's in excess, just a little, by, by a little bit of two acres, right across the street from a soccer field. Again, it's outlined in red, so hopefully that's showing up for you. So in total, in Rapid City, uh, we have, we have ten acres and, and, um, of, of this undeveloped land. Now, just at our last board meeting, I asked the, uh, commission and they were, uh, they were, they, um, gave me permission to reach out to our architect, um, and start the process now to have our prop, we've not even had this evaluated. How big of, you know, how big of a project could we get on this undeveloped land? And we've, uh, we've made, uh, we've reached out to our architect, um, upper deck, and they're going to begin the process of getting out and, uh, evaluating, um, what, what we could do with regard to maximizing the, um, you know, the type of housing that we could put on those sites. The last page I included for you, and I guess this is where I wanted to talk to you about where you could come in. Today, if, if directed by our board, I could build, we could build a thirty-unit complex today. We have the land, we have the funding, we have the financial wherewithal to do this. That's the first column there. Um, I'm glad Commissioner Ross Connect has looked at some of our numbers. You know, we're definitely concerned about construction costs and all of that. But from, from where we sit, um, and when you get to the bottom of that first column, I believe we could develop these thirty units. Now, remember, they're telling us we need thirty-five hundred units, but if we're going to participate in this, in this heavy lift that our community has with regard to moving forward development, we could do thirty today. For, and I just did this for an example, for a two-million-dollar gift, contribution, whatnot, from the county, thirty units could be, could grow to thirty, uh, to sixty-five units. Your two million dollars, um, how, uh, and, and again, as an example, a two-million-dollar investment from the county could more than double the size of our, of our, um, of our development. And we would still cash flow, um, the, you know, if we're setting rents at a level that, you know, another developer might set their rents a little higher and might cash flow a little better, maybe could get some, um, some more units out of it. But if we want to truly have our rents be, our average rent be at eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is what this development is penciled out to do, if the average rent at this development is eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, then it's, it's, it just, again, it's going to be a little cash flow poor, uh, because it's going to have debt and it's going to just have those kind of, um, it's just going to have some of those growing pains that, uh, any, any developer's going to deal with. Only, again, we, we, we're going into this right away saying, we want to limit, we want to limit our revenue. We know that going into this because we want to, we, we are identifying an income level of families that we want to serve. So you, there's only, there's only so much we can charge them. So thirty units for us today, but again, like I say, a, a two-million-dollar, because all of this other stuff is already in place, a two-million, a two-million-dollar investment gets another thirty-five units.
Kind of timeframe we're talking about?
Timeframe is this. Uh, we need no HUD approval on this. We need, uh, we're not, um, nothing here. I, I don't even need South Dakota housing approval. Um, I'm not going for any home funds. Um, so the timeframe is, is I just happen to have, uh, our commissioners, our board, our, uh, you know, our Board of Commissioners give me approval to, uh, seek funding, you know, in whatever capacity that I can. And then also, then we've got this evaluation out there. Um, every, a lot of other developers, about ninety percent of them out there right now, are going to be wrapped up in this competitive proposal for tax credits. We don't need to do that. This is going to be, again, because we already have property today that's paid off. Well, we, we, we've got, we've got good credit. We've got, you know, we've got people that'll loan us money. And, uh, there's just, at this point, it's just a decision, well, are we going to go thirty or are we going to go sixty-five? So it's, there's going to be a little bit of a process, I think, for our architect to evaluate the property. They're not drawing up any type of conceptual drawings. They're just kind of giving us a, the, the general framework of what, what's the possibilities? So I'm, I'm assuming, uh, that maybe by the end of the, uh, summer, um, you know, August, September, that maybe I could have, uh, something that I could present to the board and say, okay, this is, this is, looks like what our funding is going to, you know, this looks like where our resources are coming from. This is what the architect has told us we could do. Should we go? And then that would really be the decision. So it's, it's, it can move really quick for us. If the decision was to build thirty units, the board could approve that next month. And if that was just truly the decision, uh, you know, that that's what we wanted to go through, go forward with.
Tuber.
Did I answer your question?
You did, absolutely. Any other comments?
No, just food for thought. So this, there's a lot of assumptions being made here. Uh, the nine million, seven hundred and fifty, that would be based on, if you looked at the sixty-five units and assumed they were a thousand square feet apiece, you'd be looking at sixty-five thousand square feet of living area. If you divide that in the nine million, seven fifty, that's a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. And, and these would not be , uh, your granite tops. They would be where somebody could live comfortable, be, have heat and cooling, and just have very average cost. So that hundred and fifty is probably extremely high, in my opinion. But who knows what the cost of construction? But if you, if, uh, hypothetically, if Lloyd, Lloyd's properties come in and did this, they'd probably want six percent, uh, I'm assuming, uh, of nine million, seven fifty. Well, that's, uh, five hundred and eighty-five thousand. Now, how many units are, are we gaining because we don't have to sit there and pay the six percent? Because as Brian said, we would, we're not in the business to, to make six percent on this type of an investment.
That's a, and then that's a very astute observation. And, and, you know, if development costs are at a level that below what we budgeted, then we'll, we'll, we'll develop as many units as we can get for it. And that's the first thing. Um, we're, we're making some assumptions that we can get financing at four percent. It might be a bettering environment for that. So there's some things I think we might be calculating high in, in our, in our performas. Uh, but, but yes, I, 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 I think Commissioner Ross Connect absolutely has his, uh, finger on the pulse of, of really what this property is and what, what we could accomplish.
And then one, one, oops, excuse me, Gary.
Go ahead.
One last point is that in lieu of taxes, uh, I, you get, we, uh, allocated thirty-three thousand, four forty-two. That would come back to the county.
Well, that's just it. We're generating payments in lieu of taxes. I, I'm glad you brought this up. So that's a, that's a return. And then also, at some point down the road, this project is also going to be paid off. And, you know, the thing of it is, is the county would have had a, they were, they would have been a partner in that. Um, and that, the cash flow off of this new property that at some point will be paid off, will in time go into another property. So I, I, I do think that there is, there's, you know, we're, my, the person that replaces me or whatever at some point should bring you a list and say, okay, well, now we have four properties paid off or, or whatnot. And, and the county commissioners will be able to sit here and say, well, we contributed to that. And that money, that investment that was made back in twenty-one or twenty-two, whatever, whatever, you know, or, or whatnot, that that investment really did fund additional housing going farther on. And we're showing that even in our own, you know, we're showing that in our own internal documents, which I'm showing you. We're going to use the cash flow off of other properties to fund more housing. And, and that two million dollars, if, 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 you know-
The last point that I'll make is that we've attended presentations where they were asking us for, I'm just get, I'm just using the word three million, that would just go into a fund that would be used for developers to get low interest rates. And I really, when I sit there and look at what you're getting for that, what we're, and if we went this wrong, what we're getting, to me, you're getting, this is a bigger, bigger bang for the buck. Because, because it, it just, it's, it directly works. It's not indirect like some of this other, uh, other programs that, uh, are out there.
Brian, we appreciate you coming.
I have another, I have one question.
Yes.
Chairman. So walk me through this, Brian, just quickly here. I, with Ron was talking about their total development's nine point seven five million, available in reserves is two million, architectural fees is six percent. And then what's the one point four million telling me at the bottom? Normally, I would look at that and say, that's the total cost, but that doesn't add up to that. So am, am I missing something? And I just kind of want to know what you're telling me at the bottom of that.
Um, I believe what that's doing is, so I'm looking, yes, I'm looking at our available reserves of two million dollars. We would pay for architectural fees of six percent. That would leave us with one point four, one five million dollars to put towards a down payment in a property. Because the fees would be based on the development. These are architectural fees, so we are going to need drawings at some point. Um, and generally, that's, when we, when we talk about this internally, we, we, uh, we discuss the, the, we discuss the, the functionality of just paying for the architectural fees out of, it's going to be part of the overall development, uh, but it's going to have to be paid for most likely out of those reserves. Does that, does that make sense?
It does. So basically, that four and a half million, put a line underneath that, or the, the nine and a, nine point seven five million, put a line underneath that, and you're, we're only talking, that number right there is just the difference between the two million and the five.
That's exactly right. Yep.
That way I understand, because I'm like, wait a minute.
Yep. And I just did, I didn't want to represent that we're taking two million dollars down to the bank and that's our down payment. Well, there's going to, architectural fees are going to be a big part of this, a big part of this property, project.
One more thing that might help, Brian, and I don't see it on here, is just, there again, assuming or hypothetical, what that loan amount would be, what the term would be, the interest. I'd run that interest at four percent. I'd run it at four and a half percent.
Yep.
So we could actually look at that debt service and see how that's structured because there could be some variables there.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Appreciate it much.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Well, these young ladies have sat here for a long time.
Yeah, now you're old.
I don't know if you've learned anything from the presentations that we've had, but I've hoped, I hope that you've found some of it interesting.
So when you run for election, you sit up here now, you know what you're going to be doing.
But I'd call on the Rapid City Youth Council to come forward. But I'd call on the Rapid City Youth Council to come forward. And it's Sadie and Karen.
Yes.
Commissioners, these were tucked in the front of your binders as well.
Thank you guys for seeing us, like I said, I'm Sadie Colbeck, I am the chairperson for the Rapid City City Council.
I'm Karen Kelly, I am the vice chairperson for the Rapid City City Council.
And you're women, so that's even better.
I think it's really fun, all, we, this is our second year and the first chairperson and vice chairperson, we've only had women in, um, elected positions, which I think is really cool.
There you go, men, take that for example.
We do have some guys on the committee and, um, we have a pool of some other guys that wanting to come on the council as well.
Good job, ladies.
So today we have brought forth one, um, we wanted to share some facts about the Rapid City City Council for you guys to see what we're doing, um, we also wanted to extend, um, an arm so we can have a partnership with you guys. We have a partnership with, um, the city, but we want one with the county as well, you guys are more direct for us. And we wanted to talk about some of our budgeting needs. So this is the council from last year, um, the three ladies next to Laura Armstrong were the last year's, um, executive committee. Not all of them are back, but we do have some new faces. Um, uh, Karen will talk more about the people that are on our council in here. So you want to talk about them?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have eighteen voting members on our council and their ages range from fourteen to eighteen years old. You can have either a one-year or a two-year term. I myself, when I was elected, I was elected on a two-year term last year. So if I want to be on the council again next year, I would have to reapply. We have people on the council from home schools, private schools and public schools. And last year we actually had someone from the Douglas School District as well. And we do hope to try and have more people from other areas in the county interested in this type of thing. We have had, I think it was Casper, Wyoming, we have had connections with them. They reached out to us about having their own new city council there, which was really exciting. We have our common council liaison, who is Lance Lehman, Kristen Keiner is our administrative coordinator, that's that gal back there, she's super fun. Um, we have some other adult mentors such as Laura Armstrong, Shann Binder and Lloyd LaCroy. Yeah, so our, we have four committees and we have work groups that will work on different things, such as, um, we had a work group for our summer tour, so we got to go around and.
Just did that, yeah, that was on the fifteenth, that was really fun.
Have you guys ever went to like the legislature and watched them in the state before?
Not in the state, we do, a part of, um, some of our bylaws is we have to go to common council meetings in person or online because of COVID. So that is a part of like our agendas. We also have service updates, a part of our agendas, so like, um, Meals on Wheels. They were, they're a part of it all the time, and then we have community service in there as well.
Just being on the city council before and then being here and then going to the legislature, um, it, it's a whole different.
There, it's all different.
So it's kind of cool to kind of see those branches and how they work. And then the next branch, how they work in the different levels of government. So I encourage you guys to, to just maybe take a field trip or something there, it's pretty cool just to watch. And then there's a House of Representatives, of course, and then you go to the Senate. Um, just having to go there for a committee, a couple of times, I just, it opened my eyes of how different it is just from each level or each branch, so.
Yeah.
Just like the food for thought.
Aren't you doing some work with Dusty?
Dusty, yes, um, I actually have a meeting with, um, someone from Senator Rounds's office tomorrow as well, not tomorrow, but next Friday. Um, I went to Girls State this year, so that was really fun.
Nice, what do they do at Girls State?
So Girls State, they work on state level stuff, so you would have a House of Representatives and that type of thing. You have people who do appellate attorney work and they appeal their cases to a Supreme Court, which is also made of girls from the Girls State. And you have a governor and that type of stuff, and it's just really fun, and it gives you a better insight into the state government.
Nice. So also, the first time that this whole resolution came about, it was denied by the mayor. So this is the second go-round, so this is also the second year, we're still getting things together. Again, we have four committees, we have the environmental, the cultural competence, it's on the next slide. Yep, the economics and the mental health. I would say the, they're, they all do fantastic job, the mental health is never stopping. If they have so much stuff going on, then it's like, how is this one lady getting all this done? Um, but they all have leaders as well, I'm the leader of the economics committee. The cultural competence is by one of the now juniors. The mental health committee is by Caitlin Wellman and then Hunter Herzog, who is not a part of the committee anymore. Um, but he still comes to every meeting, which I think is really cool. And the environmental committee by one of our newest members, he's a sophomore, Drew? I have no clue, can you see it? So we'd have that, we have a bunch of projects going on at all times. We did a bunch of memorandums last year, not only for COVID nineteen, but for the urban hands, the Indian lands, the human relations task force. Um, we just did the summer tour on the fifteenth. We went to the water treatment plant, we went to the, uh, jail, we saw some of the cameras. Uh, we went to One Heart, we went to the care campus, we went all around, it was really fun. And then, um, Rapid Ride took us everywhere, and then the air conditioning, which is really nice. It was really hot and I'm glad that we went, we went in the morning. Um, we also just started a partnership with Black Hills Area Community Foundation, I always get that wrong, about the youth philanthropy, so they would have a grant and then we would, um, choose where in the community that grant goes, um, based on how, I would say based on, um, what they do for the teens in the community. So some different organizations have already come to us asking for money, we currently are not funded. Um, we get donations from our adult mentors, that's it. Um, we've had, um, the Cave Collective, where we have a lot of our meetings ask for money and we don't have any, which I thought was really cool, why would, anyways. We also did, uh, t-shirts building in the beginning of the year for, um, the hospital. We had, um, we did a scrubber on the statues, we took like an evening to do that. So the Black Hills Area Community Foundation is partnering with us for the youth philanthropy, just so that we understand like what the community needs are and what the grant process is like. Um, awesome. So as we mentioned in the beginning, we're looking for a partnership with you guys to help move our efforts forward. We currently are collaborating with the city as well as RCAS in supporting our efforts and we'd like to bring the county into this collaboration. So I'm hopeful that you guys know your mission. Um, the twenty-two percent, twenty-two point eight percent of the Pennington County population is people under eighteen years old, so the youth population and everything. And we really want to bring forward, um, youth civic engagement and help bring forth the needs of the citizens under eighteen. And we feel like the youth voice is the best way to do that. So we have already, um, shared this with the city and we thought that you guys should be a part of the conversation. This is our overall budget, we're, it's very straightforward, thirty thousand dollars. We're asking for this much in supplies and materials, that's it. So for supplies and materials, currently, all of our funding comes from our adult mentors and those who are helping us out, like Kristen. Um, anytime we need help with a lunch or we need help with just paper and everything, stuff like that. She actually, we have, um, business cards and Kristen helped us get those. So that would kind of be what this would help us get for printing and our binders and everything. That way our adult mentors don't have to try and help us fund that themselves. The binders were also donated, um, by, who was it, by Malcolm Chapman? Yep, the Optimus Club, so they were donated by them and they continue to donate, but we feel that we should start taking that into our own hands, because they donate so much to us over the years. And marketing, so our marketing, we, and we do quite a few activities, so like when we went on the summer tour and everything, we want in the upcoming year to try and have some sort of apparel, be it a t-shirt or something, um, that we can all wear together. That way you can tell what group we are representing, like you would if you went on a school field trip. You normally have that shirt for the group you're with. Um, we do have a website currently, but it is not a very good website. It currently just takes you to the application and that's about it. It doesn't give you too much in-depth information about what we do, what we've done recently. And we'd really like to expand upon that, that way you don't have to try and go through social media to find that. I know that when I, um, put in my application, I, Kristen just was like, you should do this. And I'm like, well, I wanted to do some research and there was no research about any of like the vision, what, who was already like, how it started, I didn't realize how long Lloyd has been trying to get this started until the second meeting. And it was like, I didn't know that it was taking this long to get here. Um, yeah, like the website, it was just, we could use something better. The community engagement, um, we did a park cleanup last year on the horse day, the summer, which was very nice. Um, we also, the mental health committee loves to just do everything outside. So they did, um, rock paintings around high suicide, um, places. Things you can call something that will cheer you up to get you out of that state. So what, the eventual doesn't happen. Um, and all of that has been donated or funded by the adult mentors. And we could use just this money to get us through that instead of it just being donated. And then the bulk of our, um, budget is to training and travel, to go to the National League of Cities Annual Congressional Summit. We think that it would be amazing for us to go and to take what we learn there, not only just for us, but to bring it back to Rapid City and make it, like the quote says, a vibrant community where citizens can prosper and enjoy the quality of life. We would take eleven youth city council members, just because it's in Novem, it's in November from what I believe, next year. Um, and two adult mentors, um, Lance Lehman said that he would take some of his already budget and go with us as our common council liaison. Laura Armstrong also said that she would want to go, but I don't believe that she is running again, so I don't think she'd be able to come. Um, Mayor Steve Ballner has already expressed that he is willing to help fund and he will be including something into the twenty-twenty-two budget. It would just be under the common council, it wouldn't be as the youth city council. We are asking for split halves of fifteen thousand dollars. It would mainly go towards the, um, travel, so seven youth and a half in the dollar. It's not half in the dollar, it's just fifteen thousand dollars. Um, all of this would be partnering just to help youth civic engagement, because that's all that we do. If you guys should have seen our December meeting last year, it, by far, it's the best meeting we've had. The debate was awesome and very respectful.
I think the funniest part of that meeting, so that was the meeting where we had a discussion on the mask mandate. Uh, we were all wearing Santa hats and reindeer ears for Christmas. So there's a bunch of us just having this discussion about masks while wearing jingly hats.
So you're asking us for fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand, yes.
I like the way that.
Questions, yeah, go ahead, Ron.
I like the way that you, uh, mentioned the county mission and the youth city council, but, uh, your, the mission statement's not complete. The rest of that mission statement would be, services shall be provided in a fair, respectful and professional manner consistent with available human, natural and economic resources. That's the rest of the mission statement.
Thank you.
Got that memorized, because I.
He's got, he, he's got it on his card, he's got it on his card.
I probably would have been looking.
Statement is feel the love, so.
This is just the rest of our council, that's everyone that is currently a member. Um, that was our latest one, so yeah, if you guys have any questions.
So how many, it's a two-year term?
So I started as a one-year term and now I have a two-year term, so my term ends in, it's on here somewhere. My term ends in twenty-twenty-two.
So tell me, um, you guys started as a, as a Rapid City City Council, how are you representing Pennington County? I know Rapid City is in Pennington County, but we have many cities and many rural areas in the outlining areas, how would you represent us as us in Pennington County? Based that we would be paying half of your funding, even though you'd be called Rapid City's, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to take it?
Yeah. So as I mentioned before, we did have someone from the Douglas School District last year and we do hope to try and reach out to more people from that area and within the other smaller cities in Pennington County and try and grow that involvement and that interaction between those groups.
So not only do we want more people from each district, we also do things in every district. So when we had the Douglas person, they only had a one-year term and they decided not to continue, um, we decided that, um, we wanted to do more things, we wanted to do things out in Box Elder, we wanted, we would love to do things out in the lawn, we would love to do things here, there and everywhere. But right now we're focusing on just where we started. We mainly do a lot of things downtown, we've had like city entities come in and be like, how could you help us? The human resources, they came in, they wanted to do a podcast and Karen and, uh, Blake took it out of the water and they're like, we really want to help. So we help different communities that are already in here. Um, I mean, I really want to, um, volunteer at the care campus, I can't currently yet. So there's always, there's always like, um, different things that we want to do and it's always in Pennington County. And we do park cleanups all the time. Drove Goyle is, um, the environmental leader and he wants to do park cleanups, he said every Tuesday.
I think it's pretty cool what you guys are doing, um, why I say that is because I think the best commissioners, the best politicians are the ones that volunteer before they got into office. They know about their community, they know what's going on in their community and they actually want to serve, not like I tell people, you don't want to be something, you want to do something. Um, so I think this is a great step, um, for that mission, uh, for going to the next step and seeing, number one, what our job is, because this is, in a sense, we get paid for it, but you're doing a lot of community service and you're dealing with a lot of different entities. And it's pretty amazing that you guys are learning that, because in school, you know, you learn about government, the different branches, but you really don't see it. And I think it also will help how people vote or, or how, when you get out of high school and you can vote. Um, you guys being in the community going, you know, this is how they do this, this is what they did. And just involving this many, um, children or kids, youth, I should say, in the different communities, if that, if that's where you're going throughout Pennington County, I think it's, it's good and it's a good source for us to invest in.
Let me help out just a little bit here, and just give a little bit of background anyhow. Um, when, when she says there's eighteen youth council, that's correct. You know, and she mentioned the ages and so forth, but there's a board that picks these, these young people. So they come from all walks of life, it's not just, uh, they have to apply to be on there and they get referred from teachers and so forth, so it's an application process and so that's how you get started and then you reapply, just as, as Sadie and you guys did, because you enjoy it and so forth, move forward. You know, the reason why they're here today is because they want a partnership, you know, uh, the school board, Kristen, they hired Kristen back when their, when the youth engagement just started out, to start the youth engagement in Rapid City and Kristen. And it was these kids from the youth engagement who brought the youth city council to life and brought it forward after so many years. It come from them. Nobody else, I mean, when there was some seeds planted years ago, but the youth engagement, these kids come up with it and they went to the mayor and, and were persistent, you can see how elegantly they, they present themselves, you guys do a very good job. And it's, that's how it got started and they're doing tremendous work. I mean, they toured Pennington County, when you want to know what they're going to do for Pennington County. Nine-one-one, care campus, uh, One Heart, they toured a lot of the, and the, at the jail. That was, I, I was even amazed at the jail deal, but I mean, and they want to do their work. My aha moment with this group was just last week, I'll, I'll admit that, you know, I, so I, to me, the fifteen thousand splitting between the city and the county, I think is a great partnership. City, county, school, all working together and, and, uh, Deb, you've been in JDI? I was in JDI, started out with a reduction. This is the investment I think the community does to help do prevention and move. This is the investment, I think, the community does to help do prevention and move stopping. I thought about this this morning. Take one, one thought about, say Sadie, uh, I never knew about TikTok till, till you guys. Now I'm a fan of it. But I mean, just think about the context that Sadie has in her phone with the youth council and how she passes on, how many people that goes, those youth go to. Those go to, the positive that that comes from. So their re, their reach is great, is, is what I want.
I've seen how much the youth is on their phone, it better be a big reach.
Now I kind of lost track where I was going with this. As, as you guys can see, me and, me and Deb poke at each other, but we've been around each other quite a bit. Quite a few years from the city council to here, so. But I just think they do, the partnership is, would be a great, oh my, my aha moment, you almost made me forget about my aha moment. Was just yesterday down at the Cave Collective. Cause Deb, you know, we talked about way back when, a place for the youth to go. And you, they came to us and they wanted a place that they could feel safe, comfortable. Where they could meet and have that type and, and some other stuff had happened. And I seen the presentation until I went down there and met with you guys and then kind of sat through your little meeting afterwards. It was the aha moment, that was the, the priceless place that these young people have been looking for for years. I mean, uh, it's a nonprofit for youth. I asked them to bring some pamphlets for you guys because. I think they really want to help support this place and have their meetings there instead of it at the city. Cause cities not, you know, it's, it's more for the official type stuff. But this place is more, so they may.
Reach out to more people that way.
Yeah, so I'm, I just wanted to pass that on if you guys have a chance to go down there. But I think that's what their main search is the, is the partnership.
You know, one other thing, just because all of a sudden it was like, oh, my aha moment, just like Lloyd was saying. Actually, it was after our summer tour. And the conversation that took place in the, the trolley that, that we ran, um, which got really hot in the afternoon. But, but at the same time, on, on our trip back um to City Hall or actually to the Civic Center parking lot. Um, two of the people, including Sadie, they were talking about, oh my gosh. I had no idea all these amazing things are going on in our community. And you know, it makes me believe, and I don't want to put words into your mouth. But what I heard was, it makes me realize this is where I want to be in the future. This is where I want to live because great things are happening right here in our community. So when we're talking about a county and we're talking about the investment in our amazing young people. That investment is going to continue to give back to our community, even as they move into, you know, raising their families. And hopefully living here in the Pennington County area because they know it's great. And because they've invested time and energy already in this community. Um, and is it true? Is that what I heard, is that what came out of your mouth?
She will go off for hours about how much she loves. And I could too. But we went to all these different places and I was like, how? This was downtown, like I've been driving by this for how long now? And I didn't even know that it existed. And there was this, that and the other that we like visited. Going to the jail really opened my eyes because you see the movies about like this, this, that and the other happens. And it's like, that's a horrible place to go. They treat people with humanity there and then they treat people with respect. And it's like, this is South Dakota. Like, how did, how was this under the radar for so long? And going to like the different place, I love volunteering, I love spending my time in the community. And I was like, there's all these places that I've, I haven't volunteered yet. And it's like, I want to check all of this stuff off my box. And it's just an amazing, I didn't realize how great Pennington County was until I stepped foot downtown, pretty much.
Yeah, and um, so I'm actually, I'm a military brat, so I've lived in a few different places. And my family, before we moved here, I also, for the record, I'm really bad at geography. And the only reason I can place South Dakota on the map is because I was born in North Dakota. And they're right beside each other. But I didn't really understand what was going to be here. Uh, the first like week I lived here, I watched a guy ride his horse through the coffee drive-through. And that was definitely something I had never seen before. Uh, so that was interesting, but South Dakota has genuinely been my favorite state to live in. And there's just, there's a lot here that the other places don't have, like snow. Snow is very nice. I lived in Florida and Louisiana for majority of my life and I do not like those places compared to here. Um, but besides the snow, there's a lot of other stuff here that it's just really wonderful to go around and be able to experience. I um, I walked around with Sadie downtown to take her shopping and apparently she does not leave her house very often.
I don't apparently. So I live out in Blackhawk and I'm like, there's so much to do out in Blackhawk. And then I come downtown because Karen invited me to go do this, that and the other. I'm like, there's this much stuff downtown? I thought it was just a bunch of apartments. Like, this is, I've never been a part of this much stuff.
There's, there's a lot to do here and I don't think as many of the youth realize it as they should.
So last night I was uh watching a, a presentation that the mayor of Rapid City did. Recapping some of the stuff that he remembered when he was visiting with President Biden. You know, and we, we know we got a meth problem and we can build more jails and we can build more jails, but that's not going to cure the problem. How you're going to cure the problem is what Steve said. You know, you have to go back to the very fundamentals of what we create. And what we create is youth. And then we, then we have to sit there and give you the opportunity to do what you want to do. To, and uh, we just have to rethink. We can't, like I said, we just can't keep building jails. We have to support our uh, our youth and uh, and, and folks that are, you know, just financially unfortunate. Uh, and give them the guidance so that they can, you know, we can turn out a better society. I mean, that's how we're going to fix this problem in the long run.
I, I got one comment. Karen, ask me, tell me if this is true or not. I thi, I think Sadie would be a heck of a hell raiser if it hadn't been for the, the youth council. I, 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 I think about these things because I seen Sadie come into this position from last year. After watching the first chair come in. And, and I watched you walk up as president and become, boy, you took control right away. I mean, it was like, you guys are gonna, we're gonna do emails, we're gonna do this, you're gonna do this. Control, I meant, I shouldn't say control, but you, after watching and, and taking over, I seen that. And I, I think if you, you were on the other end, we'd be in a world of trouble. You know what I'm saying, if you, if you're in trouble. That's just, that was my thought. And I, I just respect that, the way you took over and took charge. Uh, you weren't trying to be mean and none of you guys have, have done a fantastic job. But I just, you know, that's what happens when you sit back on the sideline for a year and you see how things are. Then when it's your turn to move up, you've, you've made some uh great advances and, and learned from what you sat back.
Thank you ladies for coming.
I want to thank you both for coming and make your presentation. I want to thank you also for serving in the capacity that you are, great young ladies. One last question, have they selected a, a location for the this year's conference?
I believe it's Salt Lake City. I'm gonna be, I was looking into, I think it was twenty twenty-two Salt Lake City.
At my.
This year is Salt Lake City.
Oh, in November.
Where, oh?
It's, it's gonna be at Salt Lake City in November in Utah.
Didn't know if that was this year or if that was next year. I don't think they have a place chosen for next year.
Okay.
Nice, and I've been to National League of Cities and it's pretty amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some cards for you guys.
Okay.
Ladies.
Also, I have three Cave Collective pamphlets if anyone wants them.
Thank you.
Good job, girls.
I still got the one, I got mine on Holly's desk. So if somebody else wants one, look through.
So there are any more questions?
That's funny, but I drive by Cave Collective all the time and I'm nervous.
It is so nice there. You would think, like when I tell people, oh, I'm at the cave, they're like, what? You're at where? I'm at, I'm at the cave, I'm at the Cave Collective, I'm getting my Arizona tea and I'm just doing homework. Cause they have like tutoring sessions. She pretty much lives there.
I'm there like every afternoon.
Is it just for kids?
No, anyone can go, there is a coffee shop there, they do yoga classes, there's tutoring. There is, they have concerts almost every Friday and Saturday.
I would say it's like youth-based, but everyone and anyone is free to come.
I have to come see it because um, like you just said about knowing downtown, I thought I knew what downtown was about. It's right on the, where are we at, right over here, so.
Yes, it's at the, the old Abbey Finacy Building.
Thank you ladies, very enjoyable.
Absolutely.
Hope you guys learned something today after sitting there for.
We did. Jeez.
Housing industry, come on.
I'll take a motion for a thirty-minute recess. Got a motion, is there a second? Second, all those in favor, any that could we say that?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Want me to tell you what I just laid before you?
Yep, you wanna? Can we just really ask some questions, whether they sound stupid or not?
Just remember you're being recorded.
I understand. I mean, relative to this.
That's all good.
Uh, the five percent factor, I, I know that you explained that, but it says pursuant to South Dakota codified laws. So I guess could you explain in Lehman's term what that five percent is? And we're bound to uh rely on that five percent factor, right?
We have to have that five percent factor. What that does is it, it says that you're going to collect five percent more in revenue than what your budget actually is. To account for under-collected revenues. Because a lot of counties, I guess, over the years, did not collect a hundred percent of taxes.
So it's, it's a safety mechanism.
It, that, yeah, for the state it is. What it was put in.
My next question would be, is it five percent or more? Or is it just always a flat five percent? Do we have the discretion to go six percent?
It's five percent.
Okay. That's my first question.
By statute, it's, it's five percent. So yesterday after we were done, I went back and started looking at the secondary budgets and a few other things. And as I was doing that, um, I went back to your motion about the twenty percent and on unassigned fund balance. So I had to change one of my formulas in calculating the unassigned fund balance percentage. And by that, I mean, at the end of the year, I have to put in the spreadsheet in assigned fund balance, whatever that cash applied is. For the next year is on that unassigned fund balance. So I had to add that back in and take out the estimated cash applied for twenty twenty-two. So that is why there is a difference in the percent on, on the reserves, on the um growth plus CPI. And the growth only are both a little bit different.
Oh.
So I wanted to point that out. I also did go in and fixed a fifteen thousand dollar error on the insurance budget. Because they'd sent me a new spreadsheet and I had already transferred numbers and then I transferred back. I missed the change on one hand, given you guys, so. I changed that while I was. So that's what is different on your six twenty-five. Growth and CPI and growth only. That's the only difference there.
Okay.
So that's updated.
Okay. So are we gonna start in reverse here from on the sheets you gave or not?
Um, depends on which way, yeah, which way do you want to go? I was gonna go to the next one that says all secondary budgets included.
Okay.
What was the total, all the secondary added? I mean, what was the amount that we were adding to the budget with all the secondaries?
Like twelve million, two hundred and forty-five thousand?
Twelve million, two hundred and forty-five thousand. That's all. Can you do the budget with all? All just, just the regular budget with their requests without having the secondary in there?
That's the first two pages that you have. That have the six twenty-five, twenty twenty-one at the top of them. The ones I just gave you.
Oh, one you just with the growth and CPI?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, the ones that have six twenty-five on top of them.
Thank you.
Okay, those are, those are base budget, basically.
Base budget, okay.
And then the next one that um should be underneath is the all secondary budgets included. So that's where I did add all of those secondary budget requests in. Which also, um, it reduces the amount that we would be levying for the general fund, which drives up your cash applied. Because of the increase in accumulated building. And because of the rest of the increases as well. But I want you to know, I didn't ask for an increase in the auditor's wages. On our side for Kara's time that she spends entering all of those court vouchers that everybody's talking about the costs. Kara entered over four thousand invoices last year. In issuance of all those payments for all the court-appointed attorneys and agents.
Wow.
It doesn't just affect the courts or the sheriff or the state's attorney, it rolls into harvest as well.
Sure.
Kind of crazy. Does anybody have any questions on the secondary? Do you guys want to go through piece by piece?
Questions on the secondary, okay. Let's look at this real careful. Okay, uh, so one, tells percent of reserves, one's fifteen nine-nine and one's twenty point nine-three. Is, am I looking at that right?
Um, okay, if you're looking at this all secondary budgets.
Right.
Yes, that would bring us down to twenty point nine-three percent in general fund. And if you look at that a little bit farther down, um. You'll see that with the um. With, like with the fairgrounds, we don't really set a percentage of reserves on that or we haven't. We usually just worry about them being set in the general fund. But were it to be set at twenty percent, they would, they would not reach that.
Fairgrounds didn't come today, did they? No, would they just think we're doing it?
No, you did it at the.
Yeah, because there's point oh two oh and they're asking for point oh four nine, I believe.
I lost my mind there for a second, not that I had one, it is two o'clock.
And then, um, you know, with the secondary included in county fire, obviously, that puts them in the red. They don't have the money in that fund to support their request. Which I'm sure you guys all really realize that it's gonna have to come from somewhere else. And the same with road and bridge. They wouldn't have enough to support what in cash, what they're requesting either.
So which one of these two scenarios, uh, secondary budgets included would reflect the low, uh, lower mill levy?
Neither one of them.
Okay. Uh, well, I mean, between the two of them though.
Um, the mill levy isn't, isn't really going to change. It's how much you're taking out of cash reserves that changes.
So what is the mill levy on each one of them? On the base budget and the secondary budget included?
The, the secondary budget, it's not going to change the mill levy because you can only collect so many dollars, no matter what your budget is. So it's not gonna, it's not gonna change. Um, and if you um choose to support the budget with growth and CPI tax dollars.
Yep.
The mill levy goes down fifteen dollars and seventy cents per hundred thousand.
Which makes it what? Six point two.
Five point nine seven one.
It goes on what now?
Five point nine.
For every hundred thousand, it goes to them.
Fifteen dollars and seventy cents.
The base budget right now is five point nine seven one.
That's, that's all, that's, unless you want to increase it by the stored CPI, that is the maximum tax dollars that we could collect.
So Cindy, on the one that says all secondary budgets included?
Yes.
In that, are those one-time expenditures in that or not?
No, the next one that says all secondary budgets and one-time expenditures. Have been taken out of cash analysis, so I, I just reduced the cash by that amount.
Oh, I'm, I was misunderstanding what I was saying, okay.
So yeah.
So you're saying the secondary budgets included reflect. So you're saying the secondary budgets included reflects uh. A higher proposed budget of twelve million two forty-five?
Mm-hmm.
Forty-five, okay. It's just the difference of those two columns then. The one twenty-seven minus the one fourteen.
Right.
Okay. So then if we review everything that's been put in front of us, we might sit there and say we don't, we wanna re- we we wanna cap that twelve million. We might not wanna go over eight million. I mean, this is the type of stuff that we should look at and figure out which one of those.
That's what you guys get to decide is which one or which ones. Of the um secondary budgets you want to include uh to fund in the twenty twenty-two budget, yes.
I think it'd be nice to see a list of everybody, like you said, all the secondaries, we have a list.
It's in the front of your binder.
Right, it's right in the front.
This is the whole list.
Yep, it looks like this.
Dale, we're not doing any of that. That has the twelve million.
Yep.
Which one is that? I just wanna make sure I'm thinking of the right one.
This twenty twenty-two secondary at the top?
Yep. No, I know, it's not there. Um, it was, it's like there's another sheet that I'm missing. I pulled them out because I was looking at them here today. But now they're not looking at any paperwork. Now I'm a little irritated. Cause I made notes on them. Oh yeah, you're welcome, look, cause I made notes on them. Oh, that's so, ha ha. That's it.
I saw a piece of that.
I bet you this is what I'm looking for right here, cause I pulled them out. That's what I'm myself looking for.
I agree, I just, this is just really to ask questions and so you understand exactly what we've got in front of us.
Well, knowing what you know, and assuming you were us, what would you do?
Of course, when I look at, when I look at it, um, I I like the base budget, obviously, because it it brings down. Um, what the cash applied was from last year, it brings it down, it's not down to the five percent, but I still think we would. Be fine as far as cash reserves go. Um, but I'm not sitting in the other department head shoes when it comes to. Um, the increase in in work that they're looking at, the need for new FTEs, um. The need for equipment, that sort of thing, so. My, my vote doesn't matter.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, we're trying to uh realize a twenty percent reserve, right? So can we do that under each one of these scenarios? Okay, so then we'd have to reduce that twelve million to do that, is that correct?
Yeah, if you, if you funded the full amount of everyone's secondary budgets. It would not be sustainable because you're taking so much out of cash reserves to do that.
Right.
Well, we had six million that we could use. And that.
You would use that.
Yeah.
But it would.
In funding this, you would use that six million dollars and you would drain it down to twenty percent with nothing left for the six, for the um. One-time projects, basically. You're either gonna fund it in the budget going to twenty twenty-two and know that you do not have enough.
I think I'm just tired.
Cash and revenue to support that going forward. Or you're going to spend that six thousand or six million dollars or could spend that six million dollars on those one-time costs.
Maybe the best question isn't. If we fund secondary budget requests, those are requests that once they go into the budget, they're obligated for however long they go. So that means that six million is gonna be obligated as inflation and everything every year, so it would add six million to our budget this year. It would add six million plus inflation next year, so wow, that's a lot of.
That's what she was saying, you wanna do capital costs that you one-time.
Well, and not necessarily, because like highway, road and bridges request. Hill City Master Shop, Rapid City Yard Cold Storage Building, that's four point seven million, that's gonna be a one-time. So not necessarily.
Continued.
Continued, depending on what it is.
Within the general fund. Most of those are gonna be ongoing costs.
Yes.
But not, yeah, she's correct, not in highway and not in um.
Fire.
Fire and also not in emergency management for his equipment for the ELC room. Those, those would just be one-time.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
You know, move that over to one-time funding and swap that back and forth, but.
So we have a list of one-time funding and we have a list of.
Yep, you do.
Realize that's what Joe was doing. So I missed it in that list. Yeah, it'd be five point five.
So what's Joe actually asking for?
Joe, if you look on that second sheet, he's got three FTEs. A Hill City Shop Master Plan for the fuel system and the shop. A Rapid City Yard Cold Storage Building Replacement and four new motor graders.
Jeez.
Five million five hundred and sixty-three thousand.
So we've got, we 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 scheduled all those motor graders.
Right.
They're on his equipment replacement plan, yes.
So why is this showing up on the secondary?
Wish list?
Huh?
Wish list?
Which? Asking about the motor graders, we're, we're on a schedule where. Every other year we replace one and then the next year we replace two and the next one we replace one. I think that's kind of a schedule that we're on, so. I don't understand the four because that wouldn't be consistent.
I don't either.
That's an extra road, that's an extra road or motor grader.
We forgot to ask him because we didn't ask about his secondary yesterday. So he was.
In that yard, that cold storage building replacement, that's a.
Our fleet currently has ten motor graders, four of which are currently out of warranty, while our equipment plan is designed to keep our motor graders under warranty. Replacing four in twenty twenty-two rather than two would expedite the plan. This addition could prevent costly repairs and equipment downtime.
So does he already have two within his base budget and he's really only requesting an additional two?
The math doesn't work in the base budget, it's only at a million. But we would have to clarify that with Joe, cause that, the math doesn't work.
Yeah.
I think it was a couple of years ago, we made that decision on the road graders.
Right.
And with, based on what that presentation, they were always supposed to be with them warranty, obviously. Or motor graders.
Might, it might take, it might take this first round to keep them all in warranty though. I, I'm not sure it moved everything to stay in warranty immediately.
Right.
I think it takes that first round to do that.
Trying to think, warranty is seven thousand hours, I think, six or seven thousand hours.
Holly, if we had another work session, when would we have it, so we could actually just sit here and ask?
We can schedule it.
Yeah, I think, I think I need to process some of this.
Yeah.
Well, I think on, on Joe, I suspect what Joe is doing is thinking, okay, they got some one-time money. I'm gonna put in this request and see if we can move this forward. So I think we need in reality from him.
And we'll get that, we can get clarification from him.
Cause this cold storage building replacement, yeah, I don't see that happening.
Well, it'd be nice to have a screen, like we used to have, Sid, or Julie would have a screen and maybe we you, we did that too, Cindy. Um, if we switch this, what would it be? I think that would be nice for a work session.
I can do that.
Let me go grab my calendar.
For a work session, yeah, we can do that.
Cause right now I'm brain dead.
If I start throwing spreadsheets up there and flipping numbers, you're gonna be even more brain dead.
That's what I'm saying, not right now, but you, you know, when we start doing it, it made it easier for us to comprehend what we were doing to the budget. When you saw the numbers change and you saw what you were doing to the budget based on that spreadsheet, um, that made you wake up real quick about what you thought you wanted to do.
You know, that Joe's uh cold or cold storage building, that's something, that's never been brought up in the building committee. I mean, the other one, the salt storage, you know, that was, so this is kind of a uh.
A new jump.
Shocker, just to get this like.
There's a lot of people that got a lot of different stuff where other people haven't had anything over the years that are making requests. I know some are funded and self-funded are basically bringing money, but um, I think we have a lot of people that have. Like we didn't let you have four FTEs every year, we didn't let you have three FTEs every year, now we've been letting people, because of this, that and the other, but. And then other people been. Way behind now, is a good way to put it, because they thought, well, I can make do and we're at the point that. Like you just said, how many court cases and how many lawyers you have and how many people you have start affecting my department, whether you like it or not. Then you start affecting space issues and then you start affecting, and and I'll keep saying, everything plays a part in what we're doing. And if you just keep adding, things will need it, it just.
So Deb, from the fire administrator to the two point six. Uh, that includes these other four facilities?
Four facilities and I think six forty-seven is what it was supposed to be for communication.
So two million plus the six forty-seven.
Cindy, do you want him to make a motion to get that firework comp off the table? So what are your thoughts on scheduling so that you can get a provisional approved by the thirtieth?
Oh, what do we have for availability? That's.
Well, we've got the two regular meetings, but.
You guys wanting to do a work session? Gary's gonna see the numbers or?
Well, I think it'd probably be good.
I think the spreadsheet, I think, is huge when we start having thoughts.
Deb's gone Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Lot of people are out Friday for the force. I don't know if they wanna try and do it this day after the commission meeting. Or this, it looks like the next.
So on these, on these. Fire structure buildings.
Either one.
Do you know if they've applied for anything from the state through block grants or?
Cause then if we go here, we're getting too close to here. So to me, it looks like this is the only date that we've got unless we do it Monday.
Monday, the twenty-eighth?
Mm-hmm.
And you already know, those farmers and ranchers.
Those are the two options we've got.
And, and you know me, I tell you, you guys are just lazy.
We have time to meet Monday's deadline. For at the meetings.
They put everything to work.
In that planning meeting, they do, so we had to start after planning meeting.
Oh shit, well, we could go in the conference room.
Oh, okay.
Is Joe, is that a? Yeah, it's Monday, commission day.
I was like, don't tell me I screwed that one up again. Cause we had this conversation, you were like.
You know that, family history, so it's not like people asking for something because they're just uh too lazy to go get it or find it. They've been, they've been fishing through their fuel, their volunteerism and all of their equipment and stuff that they do. To help, have been farmer and ranchers putting in there.
Yeah, yeah.
So just to have a building and have the equipment in order to fight it and then them go from there.
Which depends on if they have a.
So Cindy, I guess this is what would help me. I'm looking at the uh means of finance without the secondary and the secondary, and I'm going way up and it says county general. Secondary, it says sixty-nine million.
Yeah, yeah, wow.
And uh, the one without the secondary starts off at sixty-seven million.
Um.
Proposed.
Yeah, so you got a two and a half million dollar increase there for.
Yeah, just in the, just in the general fund.
What's that now?
The increase of the secondary request just in the general fund is.
So if, if we had a twelve million dollar difference in the, uh, if we were gonna sit there and go through each line item, then the. When we get down to. County Fire, two eleven, secondary would be two million nine twelve.
Yes.
Then the first one would be two thirty-five, so that would be, uh, that would, all these differences would add up to the twelve million then.
Yes.
So then that county fire, the two million nine twelve, that would reflect that two million that they wanted for the.
Two million six hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Yeah, okay.
Two million for buildings.
And they're two sixty-five, remember they changed it by thirty thousand, so it's, change that number on your county fire to two sixty-five.
I do have that change in the secondary one, so um, I need to go back and.
The other big one would be road and bridge, uh, twenty-two. So the tw- uh, road and bridge, there's a roughly a five million dollar difference and that would probably be this building that I was talking about.
Point five, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what Joe's.
That would uh.
Yeah.
Help a lot right there. And then the accumulated building fund, there's a. That's about three million, right?
Um, it's an additional two point five million there, and that. Along with increasing that budget, it reduces the amount that's going to be levied for the general fund. Which again drives down your reserves in your general fund.
Okay, so what I look at with the secondary funds are those, the, the first one is what they're saying is their needs. Secondary is saying this is additional wants, not necessarily need.
Right.
Uh, but it may make sense to us to go through and pick out some of those secondary things. And if we've got funding to fund them at this point in time, settle later, but.
And maybe even on the fire service board, maybe pick out two of those out of the four. Um, and think about next year or something, meaning, you know, like Scenic and Quinn do this year and then. You know.
Yeah, Silver City.
Because Silver City.
Silver City.
Silver City and Wasta.
They don't, they don't even have the land, land yet, so they can't build a building until they get the land, so.
And at least two.
Still have a building down at Silver City.
Does that make sense, you guys, to do the, to not do the two, but just do like the million, whatever?
I think we have to look at all the different options and that would definitely be one option.
Yeah, cause Quinn and Scenic, I think, are, are major issues for, and then some of the communication, they might not be able to take the six hundred. But they might be able to do the, you know, what is your crucial, what is your bottom line?
Yeah, I think, I think for some of them, I, I think there's maybe some other financial resources if they had. Our support first. So, so for Wasta, if we said we can come up with two hundred and fifty thousand, if. And do it kinda like the vision fund deal when I was on that, if you can come up with the other two hundred and fifty thousand.
They won't.
Still match.
I'll just tell you from watching and being in there this long, if you're looking for extra funds and them to have the time to go do it. Um, they're volunteers, Gary, and a lot of times they aren't lazy, but they have farmers and ranchers and different things. I just don't see a- as much as their extra time is put in, um, they'll help anybody.
I understand that, but I also understand the state has some dollars. State may commit some of those dollars for those kinds of things if they know that that need is out there. Going back to the Jankel years, what he did for fire departments since he was going out of office, he built all kinds of fire, fire department. Buildings around the state. I don't know how many million dollars that he spent on that. Uh, but I, I think the state may have some dollars that could be used for, for that.
Right, I think I would put more into if you wanted to do two buildings and finish them. Meaning have two buildings that they, that there are needs right now. And then if they can put it up and then maybe next year, then you say, you know, we're be willing to put this much in next year if you guys. And commit, if you guys do this, this and this.
I told Jerome I'd come down and sit with them, so they can say, this, this is what we want for a building here, this, and I can help. Say this is what I think that's gonna cost, so we can kind of narrow it down and, and say, pick the two that you want, I can, I can do that with Jerome. As far as the uh.
Gary, do you have a place to direct Jerome to look for those dollars from the state?
He knows people better than I do.
I think if they could have done it, they would have done it already, even with Denny.
Well, what I'm saying is I think if, if the match is there, that money may be available. Without a match, if they're asking for the whole thing a hundred percent. I doubt if it is available. So.
I just didn't, didn't think if it was, it wasn't an immediate need.
Cause they get a lot of, they know where all their funding. Cause they get a lot of, they know where all their funding things that they can ask the state for, because a lot of their budget's got that in there.
Someone was talking about the two hundred thousand, what was the two hundred thousand dollar, who was saying that, was you, Gary, or somebody was saying? Something about two hundred thousand dollars that they could get through natural resources or something, fire departments can for something or other and for some reason CRS.
Was it Scott?
No, this was, I don't know, it was about a week ago and I can't remember what it was, that's really sad. It was some fund resource, but I don't know, they aren't gonna get all that, but. I just knew if we could, if they could have done it, they would have looked at it or some, one of them, Todd Tobin or something would have, went and applied, do easy.
Come up with any dates, Holly?
Yes, it looks like your only two options are gonna be Monday, uh, the June twenty-eighth, this coming Monday, or July seventh, which is Wednesday.
I'm out Monday, cause I got planning commission.
And I'm out Wednesday.
And we just checked that they have a quorum, so if you're not there, it's, it's okay.
Okay.
And I could go Monday if you can't.
Huh?
We're planning.
No, we need you. We need the board for a meeting on Monday.
Budget work session.
No, I'm talking about for, if you can be on planning.
That's what I'm saying, we need you, that's why he wouldn't.
Being at planning, but if they have a quorum already, then I can.
Could skip it.
I told you nobody was home.
Or you could do it Monday afternoon, I mean, it's up to you guys, I guess.
Or Friday.
No, not Friday.
What's Friday?
July second.
Oh, everybody's gone.
Uh-huh.
How about the fifth, everybody's gone that day too?
Uh-huh.
Well, how about Monday afternoon? Everybody do it Monday afternoon?
Yep.
As long as I get out of here by five, cause I have a meeting at five thirty.
What date set?
What's the date, twenty-eighth? I don't do those camp till twenty ninth, thirty, thirty first, right?
Monday afternoon, June twenty-eighth.
One o'clock? You okay with that, Cindy?
I'm fine.
Gary?
Yep.
Ron?
Uh, the twenty-eighth at one.
Yes, sir. Uh, Cindy?
Assuming I don't have a nurse call in sick, I can do it, cause that's an ultrasound day. And we have two people on, or we got three people on, but only two can be in there with ultrasound, so the only, the only challenge would be is if a nurse called out.
I'll send Joe over there.
Happen all the time, it, where I work, it does, that doesn't, it's not like a regular occurrence, I'm just saying something could happen.
Right.
If that's the case, we probably should make a motion for that.
That'd be my motion.
Got a motion, we meet uh in a working session on. Monday, the twenty-eighth, at one, starting at one P M. Is there a second?
Second. Why first did?
You made the motion.
Second, I'm second. For the discussion. Our favor and they gave us a saying hi.
Hi.
Both, motion carried.
Do you wanna?
I gotta go sleep, that's what I need.
What's that? You need a motion to adjourn now?
Or do we wanna continue this, do we want to recess till?
Probably should recess the hearings themselves, or adjourn the hearings themselves.
Yeah, cause you're gonna do the work session on Monday, that'll be, I would think that would be a separate.
Okay, okay, so I take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? I'm second.
I'm gonna vote no now.
All those who favor indicate with a saying hi.
Aye.
Both, motion carried.